Calling to order, our working session Duncanville City Council meeting by video conference Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM for our work session and briefing session. And in accordance with an order the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020 is extended by the Officer of the Governor, June 12th, 2020, City Council from the City of Duncanville conducts City Council regular meeting by video conference at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December 1st. In order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There is no public access to our physical location. In order to, the citizen comments have been submitted well in advance. Citizens of the city, City Secretary Downs advises we have 53 comments that have been submitted. And so those will be read into the record and they will still come under the two-minute timeframe, under public comments. And I presume most of those, if not all, pertain to the item that we have on our agenda that we will discuss during the regular council session regarding item, item, where'd it go? 5B, item 5B. Okay, so getting underway with this, just to let everyone know that we are in audiences in listen mode. However, however, students who registered to speak may, by the 4:00 PM deadline, will be allowed to speak. Now, Kristen, do we have any that are registered to speak or do we all just have written comments?
We have about three who are registered to speak. And when we get to their comment, it says on there, I have it highlighted. So we'll know.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on into our briefing session. The first thing that we have is for Mr. Frederickson to go ahead and touch on the consent items. Now, folks, for City Council members, what I would like to do, if it's agreeable with you all, yeah, there are two items on the agenda for individual consideration. One would be the $1,075 for the Chamber of Commerce. And the second one is the change, the sub, I'm sorry, repealing the ordinance for drainage utility. And reading those two items over, I believe it would probably be acceptable if it's okay with y'all to move those two items to the consent agenda. Because I'm reading all the documentation on the, on the stormwater. That was presented at the last City Council meeting and those changes have been made to court to what council has asked. So, so what I'm seeing is a positive ascent to that. So, Mr. Frederickson and City Secretary, we will be moving item 5A and item 5C to the consent agenda. And in terms of some housekeeping folks looking at what we have on our agenda, we probably should get through our working session somewhat briefly, I hope. And I would like to move into executive session as soon as we possibly can while we're still in the working session time. If we can't get through all the executive session items before seven o'clock, we will recess executive session, come back and open regular session at seven o'clock, do our business and then go back into executive session if we need to, to finish anything off. Mr. City Attorney, is that acceptable to you in terms of how we run that order?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, thank you very much. All right. So, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine here, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. All right, so turning it over to Mr. Frederickson, consent items, please.
Good, Mayor, members of council before you on the consent agenda. You have the minutes from your special meeting, September 22nd and also September 29th. Also, your joint meeting minutes with planning and zoning for October 5th and also joint meeting with parks for October 12th. Item B on the consent agenda is a consideration of a resolution authorizing a third term renewal with our Arbor Masters Tree Service, Shawnee Mission Tree Service, using the Grapevine Contract number 454-2017 for tree maintenance for our tree infrastructure within our parks and also within our rideaway. This is a service that helps us provide, you know, better tree trimming, pruning, and really enhancing and taking care of our infrastructure, tree canopy and infrastructure. And the new item for consent that you added, item 5A, that is amending your code of ordinances by repealing chapter 22, the Drainage Utility Article 1 Municipal Drainage Utility System, and then replacing with a new Article 22. Count, Mayor members of council, you may recall at your City Council meeting, a couple of meetings ago, we briefed you on changes to, needed changes to our municipal utility drainage, our code of ordinances. This is in line with just basically bringing certain aspects of the ordinance into compliance with our way of calculating our fees. And as you recall, we made a, a couple of minor changes to that also too, to make it, make sure that it will also work with our new utility billing system software as adopting this new ordinance. Sorry, I'm moving to my notes. And then item 5C, which will also be moved to consent, is a resolution approving Hotel Motel Grant resolution for 1,075 requested by the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce. Again, 1,075 for electrical upgrade and cost associated with the LED sign for their property. So those will be the four consent items for your consideration.
Very good, thank you. Periodically, if I'm overcome with a, with a hack and cough, I'll be muting myself just so you don't have to listen to that. So I'm very sorry every now and then this side effect of COVID does overtake me. I'm not completely well, so just bear with me if I have to go on mute for just a short time. Okay, moving on to item number two, briefing some presentations. Item number 2A is discussion on amending chapter 13 Peddlers Solicitors and Itinerant Vendors Ordinance. And this is presented to us by Chief Brown. Chief, it's all yours.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss this agenda item with you. We are asking for the council's permission to amend chapter 13 of our Code of Ordinances. And the goal is to improve the quality of life for our residents by number one, keeping them safe from scams and frauds. And then secondly, maintaining their privacy and feeling more comfortable in their own homes. And we believe by strengthening the city solicitation ordinance, we can accomplish this goal. We've noticed a slight uptick in scams. Some scams are being conducted online. And then there are also some scams that are being conducted in person from door-to-door solicitation. We've also seen a slight uptick in identity theft. Our police officers have responded to calls from our residents where individuals were posing as city employees. Our officers have responded to calls from our residents where individuals are posing as utility company employees, all with the ruse of getting inside residence to commit criminal offenses. And so I'm going to walk you through the PowerPoint presentation very quickly. Slide, next slide, please. As I indicated, the reason for the proposed changes is to reduce criminal and fraudulent conduct and activity. Number two is improve safety. Number three is improve unwanted intrusion into citizens' privacy. And then streamline the solicitation permit process. Next slide, please. The proposed changes, we are requesting that we revise the time restrictions. Currently, the solicitation ordinance indicates that one can solicit from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM with no restrictions to days of the week. And so we are requesting that we change those hours slightly from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and then prohibit soliciting on Sundays or any of the following holidays that are listed below. Next slide, please. And part of the proposed changes, the requests that we are making is to require all solicitors to wear a high-visibility vest that you see pictured here below, that will have a pocket on the front to display their approved solicitation permit and also on the back, display the signage stating that the individual is a solicitor and stating our city and the year that the permit is valid with an expiration date. Next slide, please. There will be a slight increase in the solicitor's permit. Currently, we charge a fee of $50 and we are suggesting that the fee be increased to $75. This will offset the cost of purchasing the high-visibility vest as well as the time that it takes our records clerk to process the solicitor's permit. And then also the permit will expire the last day of the year, no matter when the permit is issued. Next slide, please. And again, Mayor and council, the reason for this request is we want to improve the quality of life for our residents by keeping them safe from scams and frauds. Lately, because of COVID-19, we've seen a number of scams that have been committed online. We've seen test kit scams, stimulus payment scams, contact tracing scams, and various other scams that we do not want our citizens to be subjected to, if you will. So again, we're requesting your permission to bring back an ordinance. And we believe that by strengthening our current ordinance, we can keep our residents safe. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Mayor Cruz has his hand up.
Mr. Mayor Cruz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Chief, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
How would, how would, how do you recommend or what would you say to me, for instance, I'll be campaigning next year? Would I need to register for, for this permit?
That's a very good question, sir. No, sir, you cannot. Our current ordinance, as well as the proposed ordinance, there's a stipulation in there that if you are campaigning for political reasons, if you are a air scout, for example, if you're a faith-based organizations, you are not required to get a permit.
Okay, all right, sir. And then second question, I know that this time of the year it gets dark about 5:00 o'clock and I noticed there it says 6:00. Me personally, I wouldn't walk up to anybody's house once it starts getting dark, but has that been taken into consideration?
That's a very good question. We felt that just based on the six o'clock timeframe, most individuals, once they get home, they don't want to be disturbed after that timeframe with eating dinner. And we just felt like it was a reasonable timeframe, but we'll be happy to consider the 5:00 o'clock if you would like us to.
Sure, sir. All right, Chief, thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooks has his hand up too.
Go ahead, Mark.
Hey, Chief, thank you. I think that's a great revision to the ordinance recommendation that you're going to send. Hey, I do have just a question on the, once it gets started, of course, it'll be very new to all the citizens. But you know, some people always try to get around some items. Can you tell us how, that's just the best that they'll, that they'll have to, have to get from the city as well as the ID? How you prevent that being duplicated somehow from others?
Well, I don't know if we can prevent it. We certainly want to reduce the likelihood of it occurring. We will have a record of everyone who has been issued a permit. And when our officers respond, for example, if a citizen calls about solicitors, we'll have the ability to verify whether that individual has been issued a permit through the city.
So there's nothing uniquely about the badge on itself or anything on the back that you could put there to have citizens to kind of look for?
No, sir. I don't know if there would be anything that a citizen would be able to recognize. The, the badge that we would issue would actually go inside a pocket on the vest. And so that would probably be difficult for a citizen to see. But when our officers respond, for example, we'd be able to determine whether or not it was issued by our, by the City of Duncanville.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Chief, when do you anticipate coming back with the, with the revised ordinance?
We would like to come back in January, sir, with a revised ordinance that the council would be able to take a look at and hopefully approve. And then what we would like to do after that is just a public service announcement, if you will, just informing our residents of the change and then proceed for it at that point.
Okay, just wanted to get an idea of the timeline. This does apply also to roofing contractors that hit the streets after storms, is that right?
Absolutely, that's a, that's a very good point, Mayor. In fact, last year, we investigated a call where a roofer took advantage of one of our residents in the tune of over $4,000 and so it will certainly help in that regard.
Okay, well, I think it's a, it's a great idea. And when we publicize this to our citizens, they're going to be alert, they're going to be our watchdogs. And they're certainly going to be helping our police force and law enforcement in stopping these scams. So thank you very much for a great initiative, Chief. We appreciate it to you and our, all of our law enforcement folks for coming up with this.
Hey, hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the Councilman Bear Cruz asked about the vest. I think you look really well in that vest campaigning, so I just want to throw it out to him. Look good on you, sir.
Comment noted and acknowledged, I'm sure. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number two. The City Council Calendar, Mr. Frederickson.
Mayor, members of council, just one quick, just want to go over real quick before the end of the year on our council calendar, as I pull it up. Just as a reminder, the Saturday, the 5th is our virtual tree lighting. And if you haven't already, please contact Kristen if you, council, if you plan to be there with mask and socially distanced. Also too, just want to verify that as you're looking at the council calendar, that we still have scheduled on the 14th of December, a joint meeting with the DCEDC. It will be Zoom. We're still planning on moving forward with that, if that is okay with you. And then it was mentioned that y'all wanted to look at your meeting, your first meeting in January. I guess I mentioned to Kristen that you may wish to cancel that. No? Okay, well then.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought we had earlier discussed canceling that first meeting in January because of the new year.
I just need direction. Does council want to cancel that meeting?
I thought we had previously discussed that. Is that a, it'd be on the 5th?
Yes.
Further discussion on that? Do you want to hold it or you want to let it go, folks?
I think we, I think we keep it moving.
Does that mean keep it on the calendar?
That's, that's my, that's my, that's my thought, yes.
Are there any other thoughts?
Unless there's something, unless there's, yeah, I think we have it on the calendar.
I, I would agree with Councilman Cooks.
Okay, I'm okay with it. So, yeah, Joe, Joe's a thumbs up. Monty, I didn't, there you are. Monty's thumbs up. Okay, so we are good with 5 January staying on the calendar.
Right, that was it. Thank you, Mayor, council.
All right, does that wrap up the calendar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Our time is 6:20 and as I said, what I would like to do is go in and move into executive session, take as much as we can of that. And then we'll come back and reopen regular session around 7:00 o'clock. And so in order to do that, I need to go ahead and read the captions on executive session. Item number one, City Council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the City Attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding. City Council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property to it, real properties generally located at Main Street, Magnolia Drive. Item number two, City Council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the City Attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding City of Duncanville versus Valdez, property located at 315 Blossom. Item three, City Council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section 551.71, I think that's probably 071, of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the City Attorney about pending litigation and claims to the following matters. Item number one, Eon Reality Management Agreement Lease Security Interest. Item number four, City Council may convene and to close executive session under section 551.071, 551.074, to seek legal advice from the City Attorney or deliberate a personnel matter concerning the hiring, assignment duties and/or conduct interviews of city personnel employee to wit interim city manager and city manager position. So with that, we are going to recess our working session timestamp 6:22. We are going to reconvene. How to get to the right page here? We're going to reconvene our open City Council session, timestamp is 7:06. And calling to order our regular session for the City Council, December 1st of the year 2020, calling to order at 7:06. And if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and give the indication. Father God, we do thank you, Lord, for this past holiday of American freedom and Thanksgiving. Thank you for the time that our families and our nation has been able to spend together and giving thanks for who we are and what we are as a nation and for our freedoms, Lord. Father, we thank you for this time that we have together. Thank you for each and every City Council member, each and every staff member and all the citizens of our city for their participation and for their concern for our city, doing what, what we see as our homes, where we live, work and play. Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom, guidance and understanding for all the matters that we have before us tonight. Father, just give us your perfect will and an understanding and in harmony and understanding as we give respect to each other and to you. We do that all in Jesus' name, amen. And if you'd please rise and give your individual pledges to the flags. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number one. Item number one is a mayor's report. As we previously discussed, we do have our Christmas tree lighting coming up on Saturday. I hope everybody could come out and participate with social distancing and masks. The other thing that I would want to cover is that I think that we are all aware of the COVID surge that Dallas County is going through. And as I've said before, please, please take care of yourself, wear masks, wash your hands, social distance, because this thing is not over. And the statistics that the county is using, that in accordance with what Governor Abbott is saying as well in terms of number of beds being occupied by COVID patients, in terms of the percentages, the percentage right now is a little over 15%. And that puts Dallas County in the red along with, I think, Harris and El Paso and a few others around Lubbock, I think Amarillo as well. So we are in the danger zone. This thing isn't over. And as of looking at what happened with Thanksgiving, there's just no telling where it might go. I hate to speculate to the negative, but folks, let's be, be very, very careful. Take care of yourselves and take care of your families. That's all I would want to, to take care of on my mayor's report. Any other City Council members' reports? Mr. Bear Cruz, District 1?
Yes. Get you a trendy Christian, well, trendy, fur medals here in District 5734, Cavan Street. This past Sunday, part of Thanksgiving, we're able to feed about 1,400 families with the support of Mint Dentistry who donated to us, partnered with us. And then also, the Lord blessed us with a Mr. Matt Kemp, who plays for the Colorado Rockies, baseball player who has brought his ministry and joined with our church to help support our local community. So I just want to say thank you for.
One thing, I saw Mr. Cook's hand, but I need to make a correction. The public is not invited to the, to the tree lighting. That's going to be virtual, so my apologies. So, any others, council member reports? I know, Monty, we have something coming up from you. Probably take you last, if it's okay. Okay, so, Mark?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Hey, I want to commend staff for what they're going through as well on COVID. I know today they're reporting in the work, so I just want to personally thank them and their families for out and still working during this time. And then on another note, I would like to invite District 4 for a District of Light up. That's going to happen December the 19th. What will happen is we, I have a couple of people who has volunteered to drive around and look at the houses that's lit up and really select a couple of homes of their choice and, and, and say, and say hello to them for lighting up their house. And then I would go back later and put a sign in their yard for the recognized house of the district. So I just want to invite District 4, those who have lightened up your house, we will come by or around in the neighborhood by December the 19th to do that. And then I would encourage others to just drive around our city. And we can't get together as, as the mayor just mentioned at the tree, but we can drive around our city and enjoy holiday lights in our own city. So I encourage you to do that as well. That is my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. Harvey and Mr. Matt Burnett, any inputs? Negative, okay, Monty?
I think Kristen has got the slides. What I wanted to do, to take this opportunity, discuss this with the city manager, but I, since we're talking about Main Street tonight, but I wanted to just remind people of, in the audience and my fellow council members, what it looked like a long time ago. So back in 2007, this is what Main Street looked like. And you can see there's not much business going on here. And the council at that time had a vision for Main Street. And it didn't just go in three blocks. It went all the way from 67 to 20. And so next slide, you can see what happened in 2011 with, with the work being done. And then next slide. And then next slide, you can see the difference between the old and the new ones with wide sidewalks landscaping, but what it looked like before, it wasn't very inviting. It was a really tough project to do. So you can see the difference there. Next slide. Okay, and that's what it looks like today. And this is real photos of of time, and you've seen that. And I wanted to remind everybody what happened and where that came from. Next slide. Okay, when to get the we got to, we got eighty percent grant from the North Texas Council of Governments to do all of those improvements. The city only had to pay for twenty percent. And to do that, we had to build two mixed use projects. And as you see here, this is one, and I was the partner developer at that time on the private side. As you see what what happened here, here's a $60,000 building that now is a $650,000 building, okay, with no with no additional infrastructure. Next slide. Here's a $13,000 building on Main Street that's now, next slide, a $475,000 building and didn't have to go real tall on either one of them. There's a point in next slide. Okay, so what I want to do is show you this comparison, what you can do, the power of small. So here's those two buildings that the city and cog that all went together with that with those improvements and the in Costco, the comparison. I like Costco. I'm not downplaying Costco. It's more about the the way the development is done. Next slide. If you look at Costco today, they they're on sixteen and a half acres and their assessed value is eight point seven five million. And this is real stuff right off the the tax roll just now at $532,000 per acre. So Costco is on the tax rolls for 532,000 an acre. Next slide. If you look at those two little buildings that we use, that Main Street used, you know, the those improvements used, one of those is on the tax rolls for two point two million per acre, and one of them's on the tax rolls for three point one million per acre. Okay, so next slide. My point is there's power in small and infield, and that's what the city, that's what we, that's what your the tax dollars did on. Village and and the the call center and the post office and several other projects. So the power of those improvements was big. And guess what? These are all locally owned. This is local wealth building for the locals here. And then one other thing that I didn't get in there, and I'll be through, Mayor, as you can see this right here, this is what's called the Clyde Award. Okay, this is an award given by the North Texas Council of Governments, and I believe that this is the only time that Duncanville ever received a Clyde Award, which is celebrating leadership and development excellence ever in the history of Duncanville. It's the only one, and it was far this Main Street mixed use development, which was which the grants came from the Federal Transportation Authority, you know, for clean air, for creating, that's that's where the money came through. I did this really quick because I don't want to take up a bunch of time, but I wanted the history for for you guys and the audience to know the power of these infrastructure improvements that we're talking about. And it took a lot of courage for the council back then to do that. And there were some ways it should have been done, maybe a little better. Maybe it shouldn't have been done in three blocks at once been done so it didn't disrupt businesses because I'm not in, you know, I don't want to see the businesses disrupted, but I just wanted to for us to remember then what happened during that time. And thank you for letting me share that with you tonight, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you, Monty. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item number one, C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Frederickson, is that negative?
Sorry about that, Mayor. Can you repeat? I was just.
What was the question?
City Manager's Report.
Oh, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number two, Proclamations and Presentations, a presentation from the Commissioners from the Multicultural Social Engagement Partnership. This is presented by Dr. Laverne Hollifield and presenting the virtual Duncanville events and Kayla Lacmore presenting the Duncanville V log. So turning over to Dr. Hollifield.
Thank you. I mentioned to you all the last time we were in a meeting, I think, when we were interviewing for this position, that I would like for us to do more as a commission to help unite our community. So I have put together this presentation, and right now I'm having some, I'm going to stop sharing and start it over and see if that'll work. Can you see my screen okay?
We have it.
So what we thought about as as a group for calling, what we thought about calling this virtual gathering is Duncanville Champions. And and the purpose of it is to celebrate and recognize diversity within our city. And it could happen on a quarterly basis, every other month or twice a year. That's the decision that we would leave up to the council. But a typical program would include greetings from the mayor, introduction of of the elected champions, meaning those on the city council and school board who were present, and remarks, particularly the first meeting would be remarks from the mayor with 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 your vision, Mayor, for Duncanville. Then in subsequent meetings, we could have one or two councilmen with five minutes each to talk about their visions for their their districts. We would like to feature a city department or commission at each of these events and then have a time open for questions and answers. We also wanted to make it entertaining and include all generations. So we're looking at performances by the Duncanville Band Program, the Choir Program, the Dance Group and essays and poetry and spoken word from all levels, elementary through high school. We also want to feature a recorded video of different generations at the very beginning and in the and the folk who are targeted will change. It may be veterans one time, it could be different ethnicities one time, but we want to look at different groups of of cultures within our community. And we would ask them a set of questions like, how long have you lived in Duncanville? Why did you move here? What has living here meant to you and what is one of your most memorable experiences within our city? And so this would be recorded and pre-recorded, and we could possibly use, and you'll hear from from Klon in a moment with about a video blog. It could be part of what he's doing, or it can be a separate entity, but we do want to have a pre-recorded segment. We also want to include a photo journal. It could be pictures of different things that have occurred within our city. What comes to my mind is that rally for for the city after the murder of George Floyd. We've had other local events. We have parades in Duncan Switch, at least after the COVID pandemic ends, we will be able to get back into those. Any demographic reports and other kinds of reports that could be shared across the community. We want to make it patriotic as well and cultural. There are songs that really foster patriotism, and then there are some songs that are actually indicative of different cultures. The only one that I can think of right now is one that the African American culture sings, and that's called Lift Every Voice and Sing. But we can do our research and find different songs for different groups of people and share those songs so that everyone will get to hear them and know what they're all about. And so that's the end of my presentation, and I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Dr. McNamara. Kayla, did you have anything to to add to that?
Yeah, so what the project that I'm doing with the multicultural department would be, hold on, pulling it up now. Can everybody see this okay?
We've got it.
Okay, and let me go ahead and begin it. Okay, so pretty much it's really called a Get to Know Your Community Initiative. And with this, it's a video diary of the 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 special points about Duncanville, who we are and what we represent and what we are about. It's an opportunity for our for our residents to really come in to share their experiences with everybody, with the audience and with the people who are planning to move into Duncanville, right? So it's pretty much like a a welcoming, a welcoming site for everybody to see, right? Because I know like for myself, I have so many experiences in Duncanville that helped change my life and helped impacted my life in positive ways. And where it says Mike, micro and macro, so really it's helping you to see Duncanville from a from a macro point of view rather than a micro, right? So what I mean by that, whether they, you know, most of the times we're getting to our cars, going straight home, and not really understanding and not really seeing all the great things that Duncanville has to offer. Well, this blog, this video diary will help present that. So the locations in the video were just very iconic to myself, so that's why, once you see the video, it's going to be different locations inside Duncanville. So for right now on YouTube, which I went ahead and released it on YouTube, it has about a hundred and seventy viewers, right? So a hundred and seventy people view this video. Also on Instagram, a hundred and twenty people view, so right around two hundred and ninety so people have already or three hundred so already have seen and watched this video and already liked and shared it with other people. So as far as cost for the city, there won't be. Pretty much only thing I would need is approval from you all to really go out there and become an ambassador for the city and to make sure that, you know, I have credentials and that I'm not, that people understand that, hey, I'm actually doing this with the city and not my own entity. Also, I can watch the video. We can watch, see the video, but I'm gonna wait till later because I have a little bit more in slides. So part of my project was to do interviews with the residents and to talk to the people who live here in Duncanville, right? And one of the people that I selected is a young woman named Destiny Merida. Her background is she went to school here, she was a pillar in the community. I can attest to it because we also went to high school with each other, and she's an all-around good person, and I think she'd be a perfect person to really start off this whole campaign with the video in the episodes. On the three locations that she picked was Duncanville High School, Kisville and the library. And pretty much what she said, what Dr. Holyfield said was, you know, she gonna tell an impactful story of how Duncanville changed her life. The timeframe of publishing is going to be about two, three weeks from December the eleventh. That's the planned date where we come together and gonna do the video and do the interview. This is going to be the day and time, so December the twelfth, it's gonna be at nine o'clock, and these are the locations. And I'm gonna go ahead and show you the video. Let me go ahead. All right, it might lag because we're doing online, I'm actually sharing it. So if you don't hear anything, please let me know, and I can try to figure it out.
What can I say about Duncanville? Other than the fact that it's home, it's where you can see communities coming together to support their union. It's where you can see neighbors and friends coming together as family. It's where you can stop and listen to kids playing and straight. Duncanville is much more than just a scene that you just pass through. It's a place where you go to the rain. See Duncanville's home. And we would love for you to get to that.
And with this video, once if y'all approve it, we could definitely put it on our website or we can put it to where, you know, where a large people, a large gathering goes or just drive by, like for instance, the monitor that's on Main. And I think that, you know, once we get back or once I get back from you all, I'm able to really go in and really create videos like these and really try to make a difference from my part. Is there any questions or?
Okay, thank you very much to you and Dr. Hollifield and to all the members of the Multicultural Social Engagement Partnership for your creativity and your initiative. We're looking forward to hearing more from you. Of course, what we need to do is work that with staff in terms of putting things together and our public information officer as well. So I know you've got a little more work to do, but looking forward to seeing more from you in the future. Thank you very much. So we're moving on to item number three on our agenda. This is citizens input pursuant to section five fifty-one point double oh seven of the Texas government. Oh, let me back up. Want to apologize, we do have online with us tonight Commissioner John Wally Price. And Commissioner, it's such a small screen and I'm not, is that Alberta across across from you?
It is.
Okay, all right, you just barely make it out on what we got, but Commissioner John Wally Price and the Director of Public Works for the for Dallas County, Alberta Blair. We're very happy to have you with us tonight. I guess we've got a big item on our agenda and hope to hear some input from y'all as well. So item number three on our agenda pursuant to section five fifty-one point double oh seven of the Texas government code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits city council from delivering issues not on the public agenda, and such agenda item issues may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing the subject counsel adopt rules, limitations permitted by law, and what we have adopted as a city is a two-minute time limit on that. From what I understand, from City Secretary Kristen Downs, we have fifty-three written comments that have been submitted to us. I'll start, and if my voice begins to falter a bit, I'll be turning it over to Mayor Pro Tim Don McNabb, and we'll be splitting some of the duties of reading those. From what Kristen said earlier, we do have a couple of people that have registered to speak. I know one individual that did register to speak has sent a chat saying that he would be agreeable just to having his input read. That's gone away from chat now, but we will go ahead and take the citizens' input at this time. So let me pull up what I need to get to here. First one. This is from Melanie Davis, and the comment is, no, if it's going to raise my taxes. Next item from Julie Lee. Is the use of a roundabout necessary when there could be just a basic four-way intersection which would should cost less in the end of it all? Where and if would Duncan Switch be held in the future since that's a city moneymaker? How long will traffic be affected by this huge change to the city? How will the fire department get to parts of the city past Santa Fe Trail in a timely manner to save lives, houses and properties? Will the businesses just in that area of the city be affected and or have to close their businesses? So this is not a, this is not a yay or a nay, it's a series of questions. From Michael Wesley, I'm a fan of the roundabout and public transportation, pedestrian access, safety are high priorities. An increase in available parking would be great. Were Duncanville to revise its position and participate in dark is a great location for a transit center. I think the proposal for the Main Street Center project is great. However, if the tire shop is going to remain at the current location, this However, if the tire shop is going to remain at the current location, this project would not have my support. I consider it to be an eyesore right in the middle of town. Would eminent domain be a tool considered to remove the tire shop and facilitate the project? Uh, there are answers to that question. Uh, can't deliberate that at this moment. We can cover it when we get to it. Alice Young, I agree with the proposed bond to fund improvements for the roundabout on Main Street. That particular is a very nice area to encourage residents to visit and support businesses within their community. I do believe this area needs much development in order for residents to find attractive and worthy of being a priority and a place of choice to visit when looking for something to do with their, their community. This area has enormous potential and it could draw significant revenue to the city of Duncanville that properly developed for the needs and desires of the residents. I would take that as a positive. From, uh, Dee Allen, Don Wayne Allen, I guess. Are there any plans to allow a public rail station? If not, what is the consensus of having one? From Alan Wrightmeyer. My name is Alan Wrightmeyer. I live at seven twenty-two Walnut Street in Duncanville. I use the intersection at center in Maine often and I don't mind it one little bit. I can think lots of other places to spend money like school teachers and police officers and first responder salaries. To spend money just because Dallas County will help at the cost of the project is not enough reason to burden Duncanville residents with an additional financial load. I know the bond has pasted it, but I would seriously consider using this money for other purposes where I am the city councillor mayor. I'll take that as a negative. Uh, this is from Lucy Peel. As someone who does not see very well at night, and since I represent many others, I would like to recommend that reflectors or reflective paint be used to mark the roundabout curb so that I and others don't accidentally drive across it. Because of not being able to see the curb. From Teddy Williams. I'm one hundred percent in favor of this project. These activities and proposals are made to grow and expand Duncanville in a way that has significant fiscal and financial gains as well as keeping a close-knit community. Feel even as we grow exponentially, we need to pivot back to a focus and emphasis on public safety while navigating and leaning into doing our part with. Turning into small Texas motor speedways. Use of no contact high technology to catch these traffic violations is a great idea. Doesn't take away from having our officers. We need their focus on protecting and serving. The present high-speed traffic nuisances in residential areas across Duncanville will significantly impact property value and dissuade people from moving to Duncanville if not efficiently mitigate this now. Today it's COVID, tomorrow there will be another threat as SARS Zika Ebola. This is our test now. It's great to see our city's leaders focus is still on growing Duncanville. Each project will be highly successful and meaningful to Duncanville and ability to attract and compete fairly with our neighboring communities. Ever grateful Teddy. That's a positive. From Amy Christensen. Hello neighbors and councilperson. Is the spot where you cross the railroad tracks to Camp Wisdom definitely lead some improvement, even it's just widening of the lanes a bit. That might help make that turn from eastbound Camp Wisdom to southbound Maine, just a little less steep with a roundabout work there. That may slow traffic too much at that busy intersection. It does appear that the option most likely to pass is the sixth option. But I'm not quite on board with it yet. The spot where Santa Fe dead ends, could we make that into a park and ride? I'd love to see something around Maine and center that would serve that purpose. A shuttle from there to Redbird Transit Center would be incredible. That would make downtown Duncanville more walkable for me. Imagine getting off work, taking the shuttle home to Santa Fe Transit Station and heading to Mud Hook. That could be a very good thing. Uh, that's a duplicate from Teddy Williams that I'm seeing. This is from Chris Conradi. Referenced the article about proposition B in the city's recent email. While acknowledging that there's a lot about this that I don't know, I'm very unhappy that the proposal does not fix the camp with the main intersection. The drop-off on Camp Wisdom between the two sides of Maine is a major annoyance. This was the reason I voted in favor of the street's bond issue. Does the city have no lever to at least get BNSF to talk about the proposal imminent domain? With regard to proposed hike bike trail through this area, I generally favor these, but I don't believe that one in this particular area would be used. The money for hike bike trails would be better spent elsewhere in Duncanville. I'm also opposed, opposed to propose substitute roundabout at main and center. While I acknowledge that the current intersection is awkward, I do not believe it is dangerous. My experience with roundabouts is they are confusing and dangerous. Especially when multiple lanes of traffic are involved as opposed to when two single lane roads meet. I have read the statements of traffic engineers in favor of roundabouts and I've seen the video in favor of roundabouts that Fort Worth put together. But frankly, my experiences say otherwise. The Fort Worth roundabout on one eighty-three at Camp Bowie is a nightmare. I note that Fort Worth, after passing a bond issue that included several roundabouts backed off and went to traffic signals in a number of cases. Ostensibly that, ostensibly that did the, it's ostensibly that did this for a variety of reasons, but I suspect citizen pushback was a major cause. This is from M and E Browning. My family has thoroughly discussed this scenario. What are the plans in place to maintain and improve walkability with the roundabout? It would need to have signals which completely nullify the point of a roundabout. Have you seen Americans and Texans in particular use roundabouts? We should earmark half of that three million dollars for more EMTs and emergency vehicles because accidents will increase. A better and more expedient use of those funds would be to clean up the eyesore that is Main Street, South Camp Wisdom. With that there, no outside visitors will be tempted to make their way to the pretentious new roundabout anyway. But we're pretty sure you've already made up your minds. So we're seriously considering a move. We use that intersection multiple times a day and do not welcome the grandiose inconvenience for something as ridiculous as a roundabout in Duncanville. This is from Will May. First, let me say thank you to our mayor and honorable members of our city council for your leadership. I've read the information presented concerning Duncanville's investment into bond project. We steered toward expanding our Main Street and Center Street roundabout project. I would submit that if the railroad is not going to allow infringement upon their one hundred foot right of way, then we must utilize our funding to support this Main Street project. It is the most efficient way to continue our improvement for the city. Thank you for your best consideration. Next is from Janet Harris. As efforts are being made by the city to draw businesses to downtown, this round should improve the traffic flow. From Brian Kazer. This says that Mr. Kazer wishes to speak.
Actually not seen. In here.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read it and, uh, and to, uh, make sure we stay on time as much as possible. Um, this is from Brian Kazer. I love this. How do I register to speak? That, that love doesn't come without considerations. One. What is the phase construction look like? So it doesn't kill all of the businesses for eighteen months. Two, what's going on in the middle? Three. Can we extend the one lane and sidewalk model of downtown all the way to Camp Wisdom in the next phase? Four. These won't be the same guys great, these won't be the same guys great had to redo Center Street forty-two times, right? Can't see a close-up, but surely there are sidewalks everywhere to improve walkability. Six. Honestly, the head-in parking in front of main station won't last through this. That's not good, but backing up into the right-hand turn lane currently is an issue. Backing into a main lane in the future, question mark. No way that will work. Just some points. Seven. I love terminating Santa Fe and adding parking on the backside of the tire shop if lit well. Eight. Incorporate this with bike lanes, question mark. Chef's kiss beautifully, beautiful, finely. Nine, roundabouts are more fluid and safer. It minimizes deadly crashes by reducing speed in the inflection point of the vehicles. They become fender benders mainly. Needs plenty more discussion, but when do we start? From Star Frogger. I support the Main Street roundabout. Trust me, it could be awesome. From Charlie Camp. Stop punishing the many people who use main and center streets. Altering the intersection will only benefit a few while punishing the many. From Jason Hilliard. For what it's worth, I'm in favor of any improvements that will help to show how valuable and wonderful our city is. The roundabout could very well be a help. I wish there were a way to convince the businesses north of Center Street to improve their storefronts. Too many on that side are looking dilapidated. More should follow the strip center of the houses, the comic shop and improve the exterior. That place looks great now. Also, is there anything we can be done to get the railroad to clean up their piles of debris? I will gladly write letters to whomever responsible at BBSF, should be BNSF to help get this done. No matter how much we pour into downtown, if they leave their property ugly, we can only achieve a certain limited level. Just my thoughts. Please let me know how I can help. This is from Bill Self and he said, it says here, call to speak. Kristen, is Mr. Self available?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mr. Self, you have two minutes.
We're trying to turn his mic on now.
Chris, Kristen, am I ready?
You are, sir.
Okay. My name is Bill Self. I reside at seven ten Timber Trail. My wife Nancy and I have lived in Duncanville at the same home for thirty-seven years. I support the proposal with traffic roundabout at the intersection of main and center street with proposed renovations to Santa Fe and that streets. I have utilized roundabouts when driving in Europe and find them to be effective in traffic control and attractive in appearance. I believe a roundabout as proposed will be an attraction to visitors who may be considering a business opening or relocation. The roundabout shows forward thinking on the part of the city to manage traffic. Main and center is not a smooth intersection for traffic as it is. The traffic roundabout can move traffic through that intersection smoother than the intersection does as presently configured. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my thoughts on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Self. Uh, this next one is from Dan Jespersen. It's quite lengthy, uh, but I'll go ahead and, and read it. Uh, to the city of Duncanville administration, mayor and council members, when I came to work this morning, a note written with a blue marker. A nine by eleven paper was attached to the door about an issue that you're going to consider tomorrow night. With all the COVID precautions we were working under, this was a new method of communication. Nevertheless, the note was very troubling about a project along Main Street that was going to cost a lot of money. And take a very long time to finish. Where did this plan originate? Why were the owners of the property affected? Never asked for any input about the project. I've lived through two major Main Street projects, my ownership of property in the proposed area. In the early nineteen seventies, the city replaced Main Street from broken down blacktop roads to the current concrete roads we use daily. This was a burdensome project, but in the long term it made the street better. The other project was to decrease traffic flow on Main Street by adding a slip lane for pedestrian walking from Cherry Street to Javis Street. Although it sounded great, you can likely see one person who does this on any type of basis. This is an employee who works here and lives in, in the main station lofts. What this plan really did was decrease traffic flow on the street and very little else. The amount of parking was decreased and at the same time, the irrigation system was, I put in was taken out. The city has done a good job with planting and mowing, but even today it's hard to get on Main Street with our circular flower bed when you want to go either north or south. Just last year, a bond issue was passed that was going to provide better traffic flow at Camp Wisdom and Main Street. Now, since the county did not approve the plan, you want to move it to main and center street. Why in the world would you want to mess up traffic for two years and at what cost? One cost might be just your position as an elected official. I had the honor of serving as an elected member of the school board in this community for eighteen years and as you serve, you learn at the same time. The board proposed a bond issue in the nineteen nineties that failed because it was thought that we were not truthful with the taxpayers. I've lived in this community and this is the only school bond that was not passed. Your bond committee proposed main and camp wisdom improvements. And I, my mind go, and I, my mind, you go back to the group, get their recommendations before making any changes. While on the board, we passed a one hundred eighty million dollar bond, but we were very specific on how it was to be spent. The voters trusted us with a huge amount of money. And then we spent it according to plan. Please put brakes on this decision until you get bond committee input and also input of those most affected by your thoughts. You only have a real traffic problem on Main Street for a couple of hours a day. The other issue of traffic flow was self-inflicted when you took one northbound lane away with your slip lane project from center to Davis streets. Putting any type of roundabout will only lead to more wrecks and confusion. I can only imagine how eight plus lanes of traffic is smoothly going to be able to exist in this area. If you need to widen the street, why not just decrease the size of parking on the west side of your slip lane? Thank you for serving our community, Dan Jespersen. This is from Connie McClure. I support the city using bond funds to build a roundabout at main and center. Hi guys, my name is Paul Brown. I do support using bond funds to build a roundabout at main and center. That sounds like a really good idea. This is from Amorous Nash. I am in support of the city using bond funds to build a roundabout at main and center. From Kenneth Goldman. My name is Kenneth Goldman. I live at fourteen oh two Cross Point Street, Duncanville, seven five one three seven. Please accept this written communication as a formal submittal to be read in approval of the proposition. Use of the road project in partnership with Dallas County. I have reviewed the provisions of proposition B from the city council meeting from November seventeenth, twenty twenty. I would like to provide my favorable position in the city of Duncanville partnering with Dallas County and issuance of six point six billion dollars in general obligation bonds for a sidewalk, alley and other traffic flow improvements. I have had the opportunity to review and see positive response from Dallas County partnering with another city, the city of Cochran Hill. And developing a roundabout at the intersection of Cochran Hill and Jefferson Boulevard. Road improvements of this project created a steady traffic flow that has decreased the congestion of idle vehicles and slowed traffic flow that created a pedestrian friendly atmosphere that has begun the process of new commercial projects and opportunity for new growth in the city. I've been part of community conversations about the city of Cochran Hill project and although the roundabout project did cause interruption during the construction process. City management handled with detours and reroute plans and made the long-term end result worth the temporary inconvenience. The city of Duncanville has long been a community of sustainable living and allowing for consumer, consumer opportunities. And this would be a next step in a community initiative that can create future streets and walkways that can create growth for redevelopment of building and facilities for new retail and commercial opportunities. From Angela Jones. I'm a resident of district one and I'm full supporter of the roundabout at main and center. I travel that area often and the traffic flows less than optimal. I trust that our esteemed council is familiar with statistical data citing the safety benefits fits for traffic and pedestrians alike. Beyond the statistical data, I'm a small business owner, work from home. I would love to have an office space on Main Street among our retailers. We're the city of champions and as such must work, works towards continual improvement to remain a viable option for current and future residents. I hope my feedback has been helpful, but more importantly, I hope that we, the city of champions can make the courageous champion move. Please move forward with the roundabout. Thank you. From Lena Lyles. I enthusiastically support the city of Duncanville using bond funds to build a roundabout at main and center. From Marissa Cano or Cano. My name is Marissa Cano and I have been a lifelong resident in Duncanville, Texas. I was informed the city is thinking of a roundabout for Main Street. Why do we need it? How much money will it cost? Why do we need it? How much money will it cost? Will it keep that street safer? These are the questions that are coming to my mind at the moment. I think adding new things to Duncanville is a wonderful idea. For example, when the light was added to Clark and four oh eight, adding true safety to Duncanville Dallas citizens. The new pavilion and parking space at Lakeside Park. A great idea to add more outdoor space in a place the city could rent for parties. Current land against the idea of the roundabout for Duncanville Main Street. I don't see enough pros for the city to spend money on this idea. I would love to hear other people's thoughts on this matter. From Mark Teal. I am a resident on Main Street in Dunkville and am, and am in favor of the roundabout proposal and love the pedestrian bike possibilities in the Main Street corridor. From Bobby Roddy. Since we are unable to make changes to Camp Wisdom and Main Street, I'm in favor of the roundabout at Main and Center. This should not only improve traffic flow, but add some beauty to our Main Street. From Linda Lydia. My husband Bob and I are twenty plus years resident of Duncanville and we support the main and center roundabout. This would be an attractive and useful addition. The roundabouts have proven great for traffic progression and safety in many cities in Texas across the nation. From Alex Wheeler. Alex Wheeler here. The purpose of this notation as a Duncan resident is to offer an opinion request with reference to the Dallas County's seven project, Perrin's Duncanville Dallas County Alliance. While acknowledging the railroad's denial for street relaxation, Perrin's infrastructure at the intersection of Main and Camp Wisdom. I am, I am in favor of city approval for such street improvement to take place further south at the intersection of Main and Center. Based on my understanding, this continuation for city street improvement, though not at the original desired location, will not only add to our city's street enhancement, but maintain a Duncanville Dallas County partnership partnering relationship. I truly believe that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Our current and potential future relationships with surrounding governmental entities, Perrin City slash County, close Perrins, are so important to the progress of our city. Therefore, I ask that Duncanville City Council give additional consideration to the request for infrastructure improvement at the intersection of Main and Center Streets. Think about it, Main and Center. From Larry Ray. Just wondering, will we be able to see a rough schematic of the roundabout project before approving it? From Sylvia Clark. No roundabouts. Go to Kennondale if you like roundabouts. From Gary Bennett. I think something needs to be done at Main and Center. I always thought something wasn't right. I also wish something could be done about all the telephone poles and buried the lines. I'm also curious of as to when Duncanville plans on fixing the sewer system. Seems like that ought to be more important. Thank you, Gary Bennett. There's no discernible name on this one other than Joanne seventy four ten. I am totally against the roundabout. The desire of the Main Street right now is a mess. I don't know who thought of going to one lane northbound was a good idea. I absolutely do not want Santa Fe closed off. How in the world are first responders supposed to navigate construction for God knows how long and then a roundabout? Question mark. From James Fears. Roundabouts would cause more problems than they would solve. They have tried these various locations in Tarrant County and has increased the traffic problems where they're located and have led to driver frustration. With the limited amount of property and space to work with in regards to Main Street, I can't vision anything that can be done with any success. I doubt if the city will be able to get any cooperation with BNSF either. I would hope the city would accept what we have and perhaps spend our tax dollars on something that really works. I would like to see more traffic enforcement along our gateway roads, Daniel Dale, Camp Wisdom, Duncanville Road, Clark, Big Stone Gap, et cetera. The increase in accidents and fatalities on these roads is unacceptable and it's time for our police to be more active in traffic enforcement. It's only a matter of time before we have a multi fatality accident on any of these streets. From Katie Nelson. I am emailing you to express my support as a Duncanville High School alumna for the Main Street Roundabout. From Kathy Vander Zandt. I am against the proposed roundabout being considered for the center Main Street intersection. I have used these in many places and they are chaotic and at times dangerous. I'm also concerned about how it will affect the business properties that are located on that intersection. I vote to leave well enough alone. I think the restructuring we did a few years back making it in its current location looks great, very unique, just like our downtown. Find another project to use the funds for. Find another way to fix the Camp Wisdom Main Street section. I understand the railroad is not cooperating, but there must be other ways. Thank you for hearing my opinion. From Pamela Rogers. Looking forward to the potential improvements we can make to downtown roadways and efforts to attract more people to our area and ease smooth, smooth of access is always important. Therefore, I am in favor of the roundabout at Main and Center Street. From Julian Leschner. I hope this email finds you well. I support the city using the bond money to build a roundabout in front of my restaurant at Main and Center in Duncanville. I am Julian Leschner, owner of Roma's Italian Bistro. Thank you. From Barbara McComb. Good morning. Please advise city council, we do not need or want a roundabout in Duncanville. They're too dangerous. From Betty Colbreath. I registered yesterday to speak in support of item five A on today's agenda, the resolution twenty twenty ninety four. I support the recommendation to adopt the Main Street studies submitted by Dallas County. The federal law protects railroad tracks and thus not much municipalities can do to change that. I wholeheartedly support the project. From Jeff Stroop. I support the city using bond funds to build a roundabout at Main and Center. From La Mesa Logan. As a current resident and business owner in Duncanville, I agree with the plan to support staff and Dallas County recommendation to move the project to Main and Center Street for the roundabout. I'm ten years of living in Duncanville and feel my voice should be considered as I attempt to partner with our city and bringing my new business to Duncanville. From Patricia Ebert. Project B has been flawed from its February twenty eighteen inception through its too little, too late, no go at Camp Wisdom slash Main notification. June nine, the city council and November seventeen notification to voters. Hastily rerouting a Main Street corridor project to a never before pitched roundabout at Main slash Center only stacks the flaws. Vote to skip the seventh call roundabout project. Main Street corridor street projects need to be thoroughly vetted in twenty twenty one and presented out to all of us in town halls. Stop the flawed street projects. From Marshall Wesley. I am writing to express my full support for the joint project with Dallas County Main Street Study Dallas County Seven Project. I have lived in Duncanville for over thirty four years. This project led value to the appearance of the main and center street area and will help build a good working relationship with Dallas County. From Rallo Thompson. The one point five million dollars was intended to be used for the purposes of fixing the main and camp wisdom intersection. That was the proposal from the committee. When it was written in the bond, it was written vague to allow the money to be used on different projects if necessary. This seems to be the case. I have reviewed the plans for a turnabout in the historic district of Duncanville. I feel this would be a good idea to go forward with this idea. Duncanville need more scenic attractions to attract and retain people in Duncanville. I also believe that splitting up the one point five billion dollars into smaller projects could get missed by the citizens of Duncanville. Citizens want to see their hard earned money is, citizens want to see their hard earned money is going to something that is worth it. I feel that is important that we do what is best for the city overall. From Jones Opie Brian. I am not in favor of any roundabouts in Duncanville. Having traveled many places over the years, I have found there is more confusion and backup traffic on roundabouts. Larger vehicles seem to run over the curbs and trying to feed into traffic. What has precipitated a need for this roundabout? How many vehicles expected to use this to make it beneficial? Thank you for listening to a concerned citizen. From Misty Bain. It was rather disturbing to me that we were seeking to approve a project with such huge impact on citizens at the last city count, at the last council meeting without ever seeking citizen input. I appreciate the council members that pushed to get citizen input. I've spoken with both businesses in the area as well as we citizens since the last meeting. The businesses I spoke with were shocked and had no idea this was being proposed. There are stakeholders in our community and will be directly impacted by this project during construction if approved. The majority of citizens I have spoken to are not in favor of the project. I conducted a poll online. There were two hundred seventy eight responses, sixty five percent were opposed to the roundabout, thirty five percent were in support of the roundabout. I believe we should have informed people sooner and provided more information sooner. From Michael Grace. Okay, something's being updated here. Okay, he's, he's done two things here. I'll read, but I understand this is first and then his edit. I plan to attend the city council meeting virtually. However, in case I'm not able to make it, I'd like my statement read blow into the record. Greetings, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I, Mike Gray, serve on the Duncan, on both Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation and TIF boards. It is highly important that the city leverage Dallas County's willingness to provide funds and support of projects and continue building upon the relationship between both jurisdictions. Further, as this is an important location along Main Street, I employ the city to leverage this project and continue working to create additional opportunities to improve this corridor. To that end, I am hopeful that land use changes, pedestrian improvements, planning and economic development strategies, urban design components and zoning changes will be used as catalysts for continued evolution of the area. Additionally, over the long term, it is almost impossible to overstate the potential impacts of the proposed passenger rail station with the subject vicinity. However, Duncan must avoid the mistake other communities made by not looking ahead and planning for the future. As a reminder, the city has previously stated its support of passenger rail by Resolution number twenty sixteen zero three four, zero three zero one four C. Improvements to Center, Main and Nance have the potential to greatly enhance connections to a proposed passenger rail station and associated redevelopment that could occur. Completion of this project, if leveraged appropriately, will trigger additional opportunities for the city. Supporting enhancements to this location and coordinating the above noted elements will better position Duncanville to maximize opportunities within this section of the Main Street corridor. Consequently, I strongly support staff's recommendation to approve option six. Alternative three is the city's nomination for Dallas County Seventh Call for Projects. Excuse me, let me go up to what he edits. He says, please update my state with the following paragraph. Nevertheless, it is also important that the city make crystal clear to citizens why option six is now preferred alternative Camp Wisdom. Relatedly, it is important that the city ensures all projects are thoroughly vetted for all variables and potential costs pertaining to relocation of utilities and or other items. From Dave Galbraith. Honorable Mayor and City Council. Forty eight years ago, Perrin's nineteen seventy two, I entered Duncanville from North Main Street looking for a new home for our young family. I twenty freeway was under construction. Proceeding south on North Main Street, my first impression of Duncanville was the unsafe Camp Wisdom North Main intersection and the hump over the BNSF Railroad. This was a disappointment due to the almost daily travel I would have to make over the hump. And the inevitable low prof, low profile long trailers that would scrap should be scraped. The railroad tracks completely blocking traffic on occasion. I understand that BNSF Railroad has declined to cooperate modifying that high rail problem. It appears that just like utility companies, Perrin's power lines, et cetera, are required, Perrin's if feasible, to relocate certain of the utilities to facilitate public thorough, thorough construction, reconstruction. There should also be a similar requirement to help municipalities make railroad track adjustments safe for cars and long trailers to cross railroads, especially at major intersections where public safety is a serious concern. I encourage the city of Duncanville to aggressively pursue detailed studies to the Camp Wisdom Road Corridor to overcome the great problems of North Main Street. I further understand Dallas County Shared Cost Scoring System excluded Camp Wisdom Road Rail Crossing as not rating it high enough to score to qualify into shared cost program. As a member of the city bond program committee, I therefore accept the reality that Duncanville is left with moving to Dallas County Camp Wisdom Road, Road, Railroad Crossing, shared funding to another Main Street corridor project that scores high enough to qualify for county funding participation, which would be the Main Street Center Street project around about. The roundabout final design will ultimately reflect nearby existing conditions, possibly including the Main Street and Nance intersection, complete with lights, vehicular, safe hike bike access routes, connecting Main Street to Santa Fe Trail. Further engineering and site planning are required to achieve these functional designs. Another significant Main Street project is the double track Main Street Davis Street intersection. Twenty seventeen comprehensive plan explains that Davis Street is the only route from North Main Street westward to connect the downtown district Duncanville west of railroad tracks. I urge the city council to shift the county seventh call funding from Camp Wisdom Road Main Street to the Main Street Center Street Roundabout. Kristen, that's the end of the PDF file that I have.
Yes, sir. That's all the comments.
I did receive an email from Madeline Kelly. Madeline Kelly says, please vote against the roundabout at Main Street. I have seen too many accidents at the types of arrangements. I also have some, some anonymous texts from some citizens in opposition to the, to the roundabout. Or the project itself. Excuse me just a moment. Okay. Some of the comments were simply asking questions, some little difficult to make a decision on whether there was in support or in opposition to the, the project that we have at hand. My rough tally is twenty opposed, twenty nine in favor. Now, one thing I would like to do is begin by thanking Commissioner John Wally Price and Director of Public Works for Dallas County. For being with us again here tonight. I want to preface my comments with the, some explanation of a discussion that I had with Commissioner Price. After looking at the information from my last city council meeting. I felt that there's, I didn't know for sure, but I was willing to take the, the risk or take the chance that there was any possible way to talk to BNSF and see if we could get them to the table to discuss any kind of alternatives other than what had been presented to them because they rejected and disapproved anything that was sorted to them at that time. So on November twenty fourth, I talked to Commissioner Price. I told him what my idea was and the great risk in, in what I was trying to do, whether I could even get BNSF to even talk was, was an unknown factor. But what I was trying to do, when I discussed this with But what I was trying to do when I discussed this with Commissioner Price was see if I could get us us the city. Some time to buy us some time between now and the December fifteenth deadline. For working ahead with this with this project. That fifteen December deadline is imposed by the county for for moving forward. Commissioner Price was was very accommodating and very straightforward. And in what he commented said to me that there are a hundred and forty projects that the county is working on and forty one of them are his and he could not. Commit to giving me the city any more time to see if I can get BNSF to the table. And I said, well, that's all I'm really looking for is I just wanted to have an open, honest discussion with Commissioner Price to see if there's any way we can buy ourselves a little time with this. He did mention that the city of Duncanville is is the only city right now that is not fully committed to to doing the joint. Joint funding projects or the match project that we have. So I was hoping to I did have an information email in terms of who's I might be able to speak to. At BNSF and it was my intention to try and get hold of that person. But at the next day at nine o'clock in the morning, Commissioner Price called me. And he said that his team has looked at all the projects. And basically that that the Main Street Roundabout Project is the only one. That has a feasibility and viability score. And that there was no possibility of extending the December fifteenth deadline to the city of Duncanville. And so it was either move forward with what we have and I told him, I said, thank you very much. I guess I was looking for a categorical definitive answer and we got that. And so I prepared a memo to the city manager and city manager did communicate that to all the city council members as well. So just wanted to let our citizens know that, you know, some of the comments made tonight by some of our citizens were, you know, can we? Can we ever get BNSF to talk? And the answer is not really. They're they're pretty tough customer. In fact, when I was talking to Commissioner Price, he related his thirty years of experience talking to BNSF that. It's not usually a very successful conversation to have a BNSF. Which was enlightening to me, having never had to look into these types of matters before in my in my. So the the issue then comes to us at the last city council meeting, properly so, our city council.
Mayor, Mayor, don't forget you've just taken public comment. You need to do consent agenda.
Oh, oh, oh. Thank you very much. Yep, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So we need to move to item four. On the on the agenda, this is item four, which is the consent agenda. Oh, my, this will give me a break anyway. So can City Secretary, do please read the consent agenda and recall, please, that we moved. Item five A and item five C from the items for individual consideration to the consent agenda.
Item four A, consider the minutes for the September twenty second special city council meeting, September twenty ninth, twenty twenty special city council meeting. October fifth, joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission and October twelfth, joint meeting with Parks and Rec Board. Four B, consider a resolution authorizing the third renewal option LaShawnee Mission Tree Service Inc. DBA. Arbor Masters Tree Service using the city of Great Line contract number five four five four dash two zero one seven. For tree maintenance services for an estimated amount up to sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars. All other pricing terms and conditions of contract four five four five four dash two zero one. Seven remain unchanged. Item five A, consider an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by repealing chapter twenty two drainage utility article one municipal drainage utility system. And its entirety and replacing it with a new article twenty two drainage utility. And providing a repealing clause providing a severe severity clause, providing a savings clause, providing for a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of two thousand dollars. Five C, consider a resolution approving an offer of a hotel occupancy tax grant for the fiscal twenty dash twenty one budget in the amount of one thousand seventy five dollars to the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce. For electrical costs associated with the upgrade to their LED sign while serving as the Duncanville Official Visitor Center.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Mayor, I'd like to approve.
So move by Mr. McNerney, seconded by Mr. Veracruz. City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against.
For.
Mayor Proton McNerney for or against.
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against.
For.
Councilman Cooks for or against.
For.
Councilmember at large Harvey for or against. Mr. Harvey, are you here?
Mr. Harvey, your mic is closed. I see you're on the line with us, Mr. Harvey. There you go.
For, okay, thank you, sir. Mayor Gordon for or against.
For. Thank you. The consented items are approved. Moving on to item five B. Item five B, and this is items for individual consideration. Consider a resolution approving the Main Street Corridor Study Recommendations for each segment of the Main Street. Of I'm sorry, of Main Street from I twenty to Nance Street. And selecting a project as the city's nomination for the Dallas County Seventh Call for Projects. I'm going to turn it over to to Mr. Ramey.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Commissioner Price. Again, we'll be I'll be presenting a summary of the study that was. Briefed in great detail at the briefing session at our previous council meeting. And then, again, this is for the individual consideration. Next slide, please. So just to look, reiterate the background for this project. So back in November of twenty eighteen. We did have the bond election for streets, six point six million dollars. And at the time. One of the projects was planned to. Spend one point five million dollars at the main and Camp Wisdom. Location. But ultimately, the plan was to, you know. Get the project based on a county match as part of the seventh call. In May of twenty nineteen, we did a project specific agreement with Dallas County for the Main Street Corridor Study. Again, it looked from I twenty all the way down to Center Street. And it did look at the intersections at Camp Wisdom at Maine per our initial intent, but it also looked at East Davis and Maine and Center at Maine. So we would have recommendations throughout the corridor for improvements and then it would also inform. The final seventh call for project submission. In September of twenty nineteen was when we had our first Main Street Corridor Meeting at Dallas County. We had to very quickly turn and submit a project for the seventh call to get the ball rolling. And that was done in October and since the study had just commenced. We proceeded with the initial plan, the original plan to pursue a project at Maine and at Camp Wisdom. In December, we did an in progress review with city and county staff. And we looked at initial concepts at all three intersections along the Main Street Corridor. We the consultants brought up the challenges that we would have. Doing something at Maine and Camp Wisdom. But they that was at the time when we we learned that the main and center and main at Nance intersections. Did look promising. Next slide, please. So in February, we did an in progress review with the County Director of Public Works. She. Again, supported the recommendation at main at center and main Nance was the a viable seventh call for project based again on what the county was, you know, the county goals. That they were considering as they evaluated projects. She did not support the main at Camp Wisdom intersection as a viable seventh call project. Again, wasn't that, you know, we there was a problem there. It just wasn't tied to the overall goals for the seventh call. At that time is when we support, we extended the Main Street Corridor Study South to Nance Street. And furthermore, given the complexity of the Camp Wisdom at Maine intersection, she recommended. Camp Wisdom Road Corridor Study before making any plans at Camp Wisdom. In June is a brief to council. On moving the seventh call project bond location from Camp Wisdom down to Center Street. You'd ask for additional details on the corridor. And at that time, you had supported us pursuing. A Camp Wisdom Corridor Study. So in June of twenty twenty, I let the Dallas County know that we were wanting to. Potentially move the seventh call project to Center Street and that we also. Wanted to start talking with the county about pursuing a joint Camp Wisdom Corridor Study. In October twenty twenty, we did a Main Street Corridor Study briefing at city and county staff level. And and then that was in preparation of bringing the item to council on seventeen November for their. For their information for their in consideration. At that time, the decision was made to table. This item until tonight. Next slide. So just to reiterate the goals of the Main Street Corridor Study. What we were looking at for the the study throughout was increased. Traffic efficiency in the corridor, increased pedestrian mobility in the corridor, connectivity to the potential commuter rail station. This was. As shown in the city's comprehensive plan. And to encourage economic vitality through the corridor and then through the assessment, identify the best project for Dallas County. We looked at all the different segments and the recommendations. And graded them based on their positive, if they were had a positive impact, neutral impact or a negative impact to the goals. Of of the Main Street Corridor Study. Now, these goals did correlate to the Dallas County Seventh Call Evaluation Criteria. So there is the the linkage there and we'll we'll talk about that later in the the slides. Next slide, please. So again, this is the scope of the project. I do want to orient you to the map that north is actually to the right. Of the picture. And we have each of the segment options going from I twenty south, which is number south to Nance Street. So segment number one is the road segment between the I twenty service road and Camp Wisdom. Segment option two was focused at the Camp Wisdom Main Street Intersection. Segment option three was the long stretch between. Camp Wisdom and Davis Street. Segment option number four was the intersection at Davis and Maine. Segment option five was the road segment between Center and Davis. And then segment six incorporated. The intersection at Center at Maine, Nance at Maine. And then we, as we considered to study Nance all the way to Santa Fe Trail and then the center, Main Street between Nance and Center. Next slide, please. So we went through these at the briefing session and and quite a detail, but what I've done is sort of. Provide summaries of each of the segment options of the six areas. Again, these are recommendations for these areas. So again, part of the consideration tonight. Was to get council's approval on the recommendations, of course, with implementation. In the future, subject to. Funding. And option one, again, that was Main Street from I twenty to Camp Wisdom. What we have there now is a four foot, a four lane. Road, two lanes in each direction with a small sidewalk. And what we're but. With as well as we have a lot of little bit of extra right of way. On the railroad side on the west west side. So the plan for this or the recommendation for this area. Is that once either the subsurface utilities and or the pavement degrades where it where it is now time for that segment to be. Replaced. At that time, we would. Basically, continue with the same cross section. Four lanes, but instead we would shift the the pavement, the road to the west. All the way up into the right of way line and then that would allow us to have a. Ten foot wide bike and hike trail on the east side, which is over there by. The Hilton. And then you see the pricing in the in the county score as well for that section. Again, the county scores were based on. How they rated on the county's evaluation criteria for seventh call consideration. Next was the intersection in Main Street. What we see here is alternative two on the night of the the detailed briefing, we looked, we showed. Council multiple options, two at grade crossings, one which was. Very involved in it, but it involved a lot of use of the BNSF right of way, which as we've talked about. Was not possible. We also looked at two bridge options, which also. Did not work out. And then we looked at one out of the box location, which was a loon, but we threw that out as very irregular and took up lots of right of way. And so basically. The project that we're recommending, again, subject to the Camp Wisdom Corridor Study, that's what we're proposing. Is basically leveling the grade. Or smoothing out the grade drop off of the railroad and. What and then feathering it out north, south and east. The price for that would be two point six million dollars. And again, you see the county score. But I do want to note, and I'll mention it again later. That the county's cutoff for viable criteria was in order for it to be competitive for consideration by the county, it had to score at least a seven. At the the segment between Camp Wisdom Road and Davis, what we have now is basically four and five lanes of pavement. With no bike and pedestrian facilities and based on volumes historically that we have for. That section of the the corridor. It's only what's supported is a is a three lane. Road and in the interim, we would take the outside lanes and and convert them into on pavement. Bike, pedestrian, bike and pedestrian facilities. But with the long term solution actually creating a buffer and a dedicated hike and bike trail. In that area. And again, that this the cross section that you see in the bottom and the sort of the final is very similar to what's currently. In place as you go further south of Davis. Barring the bike trail and we'll look at that later, but again, you see the pricing of two hundred seventy five K. Just to do some striping of of existing pavement and put up curb and bollard. Again, this is a very similar application to what. Is the recommended interim solution along Daniel Dale. The final solution, which would be new pavement, new bike trail, buffer, et cetera, was as estimated at two point two million dollars. Next slide, please. Option four was just the intersection at main and street and Davis. What we have there is a very degraded sidewalk. On the south side, so just to you, just for orientation purposes, on the main at Davis. Drawing north is actually to the right. And what we're proposing there is doing some restriping of the existing pavement. The lanes are a little bit extra wide, but working within the current. Limits of our improvements that cross the railroad tracks. So we're not in that area, wouldn't be asking BNSF for anything new, but we would just re. Upgrade or make improvements so that we could have pedestrian, especially ADA access. upgrade or make improvements so that we could have pedestrian, especially ADA accessibility from the neighborhoods, that the neighborhoods that are west of Houston over to Main Street. And the, and the price there is again, is shown. Option five was Main Street from Davis to Center. That's the area that's received the current improvements that, that Councilman Anderson had mentioned at the very beginning of, of our meeting tonight. The only real change there would be instead of the pull-in lanes, as you go down the slip lane, we would do parallel lanes, parallel parking, and then use that extra buffer to, or the extra, that extra right of way to create a hike and bike trail so that if you're biking, you would sort of go between the parking lot and slip lane and the main traffic on a bike. But if you're a pedestrian, then you would use the sidewalks that are up against the side of all the businesses. And then finally moving to option six, which was the Main Street and Center going down Main Street down to Nance and then from Nance across over to Santa Fe. You'll notice that we called it alternative three only because at the briefing, we presented the engineers looked at three different alternatives. And then alternative three was the one that was the, the most the, the best rated solution for this area. And again, that consists of around about at Center and Main. It involves closing off Santa Fe through, through traffic north of Center. It terminates just south by the tire shop. And what we would be doing is redirecting Santa Fe traffic along and improve Nance Street Corridor to a new signalized intersection at Nance and Main. And then an additional improvements along Main Street between Nance and Center. We had, the, the larger briefing had some blowups of the different segments. And I believe that was made available to the public following the 17 November meeting. And then there's the S, cost estimate and the county score is 77.5. Next slide, please. So again, this is the decision matrix that we used to come up with the, the recommendation. And so what I want to sort of highlight again, for those attending tonight, let me orient you to the chart. So on the far left, you see the, the six segments that I talked about at the beginning of the, my briefing, which basically runs all the way from I-20 down to the Nance and Center area. If you look at the study criteria, again, those were the study criteria that we looked at internal to the Main Street Corridor Study. As you see, the only segment that had positive impacts to all four of the goals was Nance at Center. And even Main at Center had neutral impacts to traffic efficiency and neutral impacts to economic vitality. And so again, based on the study, it led us to reconsider the best location for spending the bond money. And then when you paired it up with the seventh call criteria and their scoring, again, it reiterated that only at Nance and Center did we have a project that would be competitive for the seventh call. And again, this scoring was performed by the Dallas County staff. And as I mentioned before, 70 was the minimum score to be competitive for the seventh call for projects. Next slide, please. So again, the next steps here on the 15th is when the seventh call for projects go to Commissioner's Court for final selection. And if our project is selected, we would be looking at basic engineering design, 12 months, starting in summer of 2021, beginning construction in summer of 2022. We estimate 18 months of construction. And then the project would be completed. And again, I know there were some questions raised previously about construction. You know, with all our construction projects, we do keep in mind access by, to the public and getting folks in and around the construction projects in a safe way as possible, as well as mitigating impacts. This project would be no different. We would be working with the contractor or we would be working with the designers at the beginning of this project to make sure that we create a project that's constructable in phases so that we're not taking everything out all at the same time. Being mindful of the emergency vehicles, businesses through traffic, you know, there would be some detours during certain phases of the construction. And again, with the engineering, what we've got to this point was very, very you know, low-level conceptual drawings for your consideration. And then again, the engineering design would be when we would really bring in stakeholders and, and really talk about how to make this, this project successful for, for our community. Next, next slide, please. So when, when in front of you is, is just a proposed recommendation, again, what, based on the scoring from Dallas County, based on the results of the Main Street Corridor Study, again, what staff is recommending is going with segment option six, alternative three, which is the roundabout at Main and Center. The new signalized intersection at Nance at Main. Again, as this was the project that was most competitive for the seventh call. And I'll turn it over to council if you have any questions for me.
Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
I don't have questions for Raimi. Thank Raimi, thank you very much for presenting that. I will have other comments at the, at the end though, Mayor. But I have questions for Commissioner and, and maybe even Alberta. Would you guys talk about roundabouts a little bit more for our citizens? More so around, I hear about accidents and I hear that you have, we did rounds for another city. Can you break us up the speed of what you, what, what's happened in the past in your area?
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Mr. Raimi and all those attendees. Let, let me just say that this would propose to be my, my third roundabout, just in District Three. I built roundabouts in Pioneer, Beltline presently. There's one under construction and, and College Road in Sunnyvale. And as I think one of your citizens, Mr. Govan, talked about one in Cockle Hill, which is not in my district, but there in Cockle Hill, Jefferson. But roundabouts have a calming effect. They, they have been tools that basically slow the traffic. I think one of your presenters on your 17th meeting, which was civil engineer, basically talked about what roundabouts do is they, they take out what I think insurance care is called the T-bone in effect. And they don't allow, they slow traffic, they calm traffic, they manage traffic. And, you know, and there is a rating that is significantly less than other tools with regards to the utilization of roundabouts. And so again, another one of your citizens talked about having traveled in Europe and, and across this country. A roundabout are highly used as, 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 as models of a modality of moving that traffic. That radio in, in, in a roundabout, again, has the, the calming effect of slowing traffic down, number one, and, and modeling that traffic in a manner that is, is pretty remarkable. And I invite, you know, council, if you haven't seen the one on Jefferson and in Cockle Hill or the Beltline one, and I think the Beltline one is probably at least 10 to 15 years old. 10 years old. And so, you know, we've been building roundabouts and we've had a number of individuals coming to the area and study our roundabouts. I think they're, right now, they're in South Lake and a couple of other places. But nonetheless, they, they, they have proved to be good traffic models in terms of being able to manage traffic.
And Councilman, this is Alberta Blair again. Also for, there's less delay time issues at roundabouts in a sense of flows for traffic flow. And it also becomes a, a real focal point for the cities. The cities of Copper Hill and the cities of Boss Springs, Boss Springs has become a centerpiece for their community.
Well, thank you. Would you also, there was a question around accidents that the roundabouts, you've seen an increased number of accidents at roundabout. Can you address or share that? I know that accident happens all over, but can you share any experiences or reports you have around accidents with roundabouts?
I don't have the data on, on the Cockle Hill. The one in Cockle, we just opened up not too long ago, this, actually this year. But the one in Beltline, I don't have that, that data right now, but the city of Boss Springs is reporting major situations and where they do not have a lot of traffic accidents anymore. The location they previously had was a five-point intersection. It was very dangerous. It was a very hazardous location. We looked at possibilities of signalization. But I can say one thing here, signalization of roundabout is less, less costly than doing a signalized intersection. And that was definitely proven at that five-point intersection with the city of Boss Springs.
Thank you. That, that can, that's all the questions I have for Commissioner and Alberta, Mr. Blair. But I do want to have other comments later, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to conclude my earlier conversation that was out of sequence when I started talking about my conversation with Commissioner Price and the ability of possibly talking to BNSF, buying us some more time with making a decision on this particular project. And as I said before, he was categorical and definitive, which I appreciated so that we knew exactly where we needed to go tonight, that we, we need to approve or reject this project and, yeah, to make it before the seventh call deadline of December 15th. I want to, we, I want to congratulate our city council for the last city council meeting for tabling this item because it evidenced that we needed to talk to our citizens and it gave each of us an ample amount of time to evaluate in greater detail what each of us thought about this particular project. Because we were each provided with some very, very large handouts so that we could study this. In fact, in the large one that I received, I spread out on a table and I studied it in detail to get more of a visual on exactly what this was going to be doing to our downtown area. And I will go back to what some others' person said, and, and I think it was Mr. Bear Cruz and one of our citizens as well. My residence in, in Europe exposed me to roundabouts in England and Germany. And they are not pleasant. The problems that were sustained, not just as foreigners in a, in a different land, but in terms of, once we get, get to know those things, the, the roundabouts saw nothing in what we saw in traveling around Europe, causing more problems in terms of people actually getting in and getting onto the roundabout because of the yield factor that has to come into play. So my concern with the project that we have before us tonight is not necessarily at roundabout. I, I don't like them. I really don't want to see a roundabout in this particular location in our city. I think with some training and time, our citizens could get used to it. But there's some other factors in this design that I really don't like. And the, the number one factor in that is the dead ending of Santa Fe. Santa Fe is a major thoroughfare. And any traffic studies that were done that didn't show, you know, the thousands of cars traveling northbound on Santa Fe coming into our downtown area don't show the true picture. And to cause our citizens coming northbound on Santa Fe to, to pull off, exit into Nance and then pull up and go into the Main Street in order to hit that, that roundabout is untenable. I, it's just not a good design. So I want to say that that's number one consideration that I have for, for, for opposing this project. Again, as I said, don't like roundabouts, we can learn to live with them. But it's the overall design of how this one was put together that I just can't, can't accept. The other facets of, in terms of economic development and aesthetics of, you know, roundabouts look pretty. No, they don't. You know, people say, well, you don't make them look pretty. Yeah, you ride over curbs. Yeah, what we're going to do with that in terms of economic development, walkability, look at that big drawing, blow it up and take a look at the crosswalks crossing around that roundabout. Nobody is going to walk around a, a roundabout as a pedestrian. You're going to get hit. People aren't going to stop. And so when we look at the location of this roundabout in the center of our city, or the center of our downtown for a future economic development and walkability and rideability, those crosswalks in that roundabout are simply going to be dangerous. And if they're not going to be dangerous, they're just not going to be used because people are going to take a look at it and say, I'm not putting myself in harm's way by going through a roundabout with my bicycle or walking or, or taking my kids in a, in a, in a carriage across there. Not going to happen. So as, as I said, this is a very, very difficult personal decision for me. Knowing what we need to do and knowing that there's a forfeiture of of 1.5 million, 1.6 million, 1.5 million dollars in, in terms of county match money. I understand that. And it is a very difficult thing for me to, to look at that. But I think that the 1.5 million dollars that we already have set aside that we can use somewhere else for street infrastructure within our city, other than this roundabout, simply to get the 1.5 million dollar match. So that's, those are my comments. Those are my thoughts. And I hope that Commissioner Price and, and Director Blair understand it. I certainly don't want to create animus between our city and, 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 and the county because we work together very, very well. You know, we know there's lots of things coming down the pipe that, that we still want to work together with y'all. It's just, this is my feeling. And this, on this particular project, I, I just, I can't, I can't support it as it's designed right now. So what I would like to do is go around the table and have each of our council members give their comments. We can take this to a vote very quickly, folks. You've got, you either understand where you want to go and what you want to say. And so, you know, it's one of the things that you do not have to say what Greg has put here in terms of making a motion. You know, so would, by, when, when we finish, if somebody wants to make that motion to approve, then it's going to go to a vote. Or somebody wants to make a motion not to approve this call for seven project, that can be done as well. But I want to go around the table and I would like to hear from each of our council members in terms of how their feelings are about this project. So Mr. Bear Cruz, District One.
Yes, Mr. Bear, thank you. Yeah, I, I echo your sentiments there too. I think that a lot of our folks are not ready for this, nor do they want it. Listening to some of the written comments, it's, it's split. It really is. And I think for us currently, it would probably be best, you know, to, to not do it. But I do thank Dallas County and all that they do, have done to, to help us out that, you know, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor Pro Tem, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had some questions for Raimi and/or Ms. Davis as well. And it, and it was related towards the street and, and Santa Fe Trail in terms of traffic and, and the control. So I So I just would kind of like an update on how they felt that the traffic would be handled there and what the traffic counts were there and stuff.
Dear, you're asking about the traffic counts that were on Center and Santa Fe, sir? Or coming up Santa Fe?
Santa Fe, yes.
One second, sir. Let me find my notes. So what we looked at was peak volumes and what we were looking at for peak volume was a hundred and forty-five in the morning and then a hundred and twenty-five, this is again peak hour in the evenings.
So you're saying that Santa Fe is from Wheatland inward is not used very much?
That's what the traffic counts show. That is correct. When we're looking at peaks of about a hundred cars, a hundred and fifty cars an hour, that's not considered very, and again, they are still coming as Santa Fe, they are still having to make a right on Center and then making a left. So a right turn movement, there's still a right turn movement. So instead of making that little joint, that rock, that right on Center, that little leg of Center, they're making a Nance and they're still making a left. They still have to make a left at Main regardless if it's at Center or at Main or at Nance. Sir, but what we're looking at is, you're right, all the cars coming up Santa Fe, the vast majority of them are continuing on the Main Street.
Okay. Another thing I guess I'd like to ask to Mr. Raimi of the utilities, that's always a big concern for me is the utility. Can you tell us about the utilities in the, in the area that's being provided?
Utilities in the area, there's some power lines that would have to be relocated. There's potentially gas lines that have to be relocated. Probably all the same franchise utilities have to be relocated. We certainly, as a city, would use this opportunity to upgrade our water and wastewater infrastructure at the time that any pavement is being torn up. The last thing we want to do is put down new pavement over old pipes. The cost associated with relocating franchise utilities is borne by the franchise utility providers. I mean, they're not going to move them infinitely, but we coordinate with them on most of our projects that where, you know, where stuff is affected and they move them. You know, the one that comes to mind that's going on actually at this exact time is at most is moving gas lines in order to prepare the way so that we can do the alley over in Forest Hills that council approved a few, several meetings ago. And that's again, at no cost to the city. Moving, again, moving infrastructure, franchise utilities is part of any job. And again, depending on depth, that may or may not impact some of the lines that may be traversing at that location as well.
Okay, and I guess my other question I have relating towards this project. Let's say we have the county patch in there. What, what is the potential that we will have overruns?
Well, I mean, with any construction project, that is always a possibility, sir. We built in, when we came up with the three point one, we did build in some contingents, construction contingency to accommodate any cost overruns. But that any project would go without change orders, I think. I could not say that that, that, that happens in my experience. But we do, so we do account for that in our cost estimates.
This, and, and thank you, Mr. Raimi, for your comments. My big concern on this whole thing, it goes back to when we first put this out, it was related towards Main and Camp Lutham. And I feel like the voters went that direction and supported it. I, I think, I appreciate everything that's gone well about working further through this. There's, there's some very good conceptual things with this plan. I, but I look at it from a standpoint is that Main Street is currently workable. I look at that this is currently workable at this intersection of Center. And I really am torn about this. And, and I would right now, I am leaning that I would not favor this project. So Mayor, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. Going on to District Three, Mr. Anderson.
Oh, I don't know what to, I don't know what to say. Well, first of all, I would like to say this, that whether you count Brian Kaiser as about for or against, I called him, I called it for. I counted thirty-four, six that didn't, didn't go either way. And only sixteen that said no, just for the record. So that's the way I counted them up. So Mayor, I knew you were against it when you slid the ones in the middle over to the, to the one side. I'm, I'm really sad for that. I'm saddened tonight, you know. Back when we did Main Street before, you know, obviously there was a lot of controversy back then and it was, it was hard. You know, because I live at Main and Center and I live, and then I office on Davis. So I use this place, use this a whole lot. And I walk up and down those sidewalks a whole lot, unlike Mr. Jespersen who says only one person walks on them. That's just untrue. Roundabouts, you know, I've seen roundabouts in the past. There used to be one over at Harry Hines years ago. Mr., I mean, Mr. Price, you probably remember that one. It was a big one. And it was, it was ugly and it was bad. You know, it was, it was not good. And there's, there's many of them that are not to scale that don't, that don't have the flow. There's many of them that don't. And, you know, I have as much, you know, I live in this, I live in this, this place right here at this, and I walk it. I walk it every day. And I see people, how you, the engineers and Mr. Raimi have done an excellent job of planning this. I don't know how you could plan it any better. Unless you just are looking backwards. I'm asking my fellow council members today. I'm asking you to look forward like we did when we did the first three blocks of Main. And I'm asking you to reconsider, to, to, to think differently about, I mean, when you slow the traffic down at Nance with the light and with Davis and stuff, this, this is a very, this was meant to be, Main Street was meant to be redone all the way from twenty to sixty-seven. That was the original plan. And I may be the only one that was around back then when that was, when that was actually done. And it got stopped. I mean, the temporariness of Main and Center right now, or where that right lane turns right, that was temporary. That was temporary because, because it wasn't through. It wasn't through. And Santa Fe has, you know, I just saw a chat, you know, that Santa Fe has too much traffic. I mean, a hundred and forty-five cars? I mean, in my opinion, you know, I mean, that's nothing. I mean, that's, I mean, we're talking, you know, we're talking on major streets that are twenty and thirty thousand cars a day. You're talking about, I mean, Santa Fe was, I'm sorry, but it was overbuilt when it was built. And it should have, it was not, in my opinion, it was not planned very well. And when we plan these streets and when we create these, these what I, what we call grids, that's where you have the grids, the streets where they connect up, many streets in and out. You know, every time you create a grid like we're doing with Nance over to Santa Fe and back up around Freeman and across, we're creating a grid in there. We're creating, with this infrastructure, we're going to, we're going to create economic development in that area. And if you want more development that gives you a high tax per square foot, that's the perfect place to do it because they're all small lots. There are places where you can build one and two-story retail and office. And a couple of lots, it's not a place where you build two hundred apartments. But it's a place where guys like the Texas Fates barbershop guy can own his own building and have a couple of rental units where your workforce housing lives. Where people can, I mean, people at Main Station that live there, that live here, we're black and we're white and we're brown and we're low income and we're medium income and we're high income. And we live together in like a really harmonious place. And that's why I'm asking you to look forward. Don't look, a roundabout out of scale is not good. This roundabout is in scale. This roundabout, the roundabout at Cockroer Hill, I go to Oak Cliff every day and I go, I go up Cockroer Hill to Jefferson because I like the roundabout so much. And plus, I don't want to go on thirty-five these days, you know, because it's a mess, you know, such a mess being, being fixed. But I'm pleading, I'm pleading with you for Duncanville and the future of Duncanville. It's not about me. It's not about, it's not about us. This is, this is about, this is about a different generation, a future generation where travel is changing. You know, we're, we're, we're traveling, we're going to be traveling less in cars. Even COVID has, has exposed that. The internet, the technology has, is downsizing traffic. You know, and people are wanting these beautiful walkable neighborhoods. I mean, that's why the North Texas Council of Governments, the, the Clyde Award gave it to Duncanville because it created walkable clean air. That was about clean air when we got the grant for those three, three blocks. That was about creating clean air. You would build places where people would walk like me that could walk to work. Or like the guy that lives at Main Station that walks to Ben Franklin. See, he can live in a better, that guy can live in a better apartment because he can walk to work. He doesn't need a car. What we have here is what cities should do, create environments where that kind of thing evolves. And see, that's what happened when we didn't finish Main Street like we started. We didn't, we didn't finish the evolution of it. I mean, there is millions of tax dollars to be had for the city around proper infrastructure. I'm pleading with you today. I'm not, I don't ask you, I'm not, you know, I'm pleading with you today to look forward. Please look forward with me. Please look forward. Looking backwards is not going to get us anywhere. It's that definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. We want higher-end restaurants. We want cool people to move here. We want our kids to come back here and stay. We want our high school students to have a place to come and stay in our city. I mean, we want them to stay here, not to leave us. We have to give them something to stay in. And this is what they want. This is the kind of thing they want. I'm pleading with you. I don't know what else, I don't know what else to do, but to say to you, I mean, I, you know, please look forward with me. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Going on to District Four, Mr. Cooks.
Mr. Cooks, you're muted.
Let me first, thank you, Kristen. Let me first throw it out by thanking all of the citizens that took the time out to send in their response to us as we requested last meeting. We said that we wanted to hear more from the citizens and we did with these public comments. And Monty, I'm like you, when I was counting, I have thirty-four and fifteen against. And then I have one that we didn't read, and I probably need to read that because this from us here, the one we missed, it was the third one. It was from Alicia Young. And it says, I agree with the proposed bond to fund the improvements for the roundabout on Main Street. That particular is very nice, an area to encourage residents to visit and support businesses within the community. That is the fourth comment, that is the fourth public comment that is in our public comments that we didn't look, that we messed over. But, but again, with that, we have thirty to fifteen. And we said we wanted to hear more from the citizens. Well, if that was the case, then we did hear from them. We could have went ahead and voted last, our last meeting if we weren't going to listen to the citizens because the citizens just said thirty to fifteen, four. Well, regardless of that, I, I did ask, the assignment asked, and it was to hear from citizens. So I called citizens. I talked with people that was on the bond committee. I talked to economic development board members. I talked to citizens. Citizens emailed me and called me as well. And so I truly wanted to hear from a variety or diverse group of people as from citizens. And so I just did that. So I want the citizens to know that especially every citizen, whether you voted for it or against it, I did hear you, I am hearing your voice and I appreciate you coming in with your loud voice. I'm like Monty, the future of Duncanville, we have to continue to fight for these type of projects. And I will go, as long as I'm elected official here, not to be, I'm going to continue to fight for the better advancement of our city. Even if I'm the lone vote, I'm always still vote for the development of our city to move forward, to move forward. You know, like we could easily, we could easily blame staff or blame the council, whoever else. I'm not looking to put blame, but tonight, really, the blame is back to, if it's a blame, it's back, it's on us, it's on the council to look forward. When I was looking at my tax statement just the other day, I said, wait a minute, is the county, is the county giving us money? And then I noticed a little part on my card that says, no, I paid county taxes. So it's not money that the county is just giving us. It's money that is allocated to the area and the commissioner court, and the commissioner has the right to distribute where that money, where those funds go. I was looking at another project that we had with the county and I, and all the council members have this, have the same information. Let me pull it up here for a minute. It talked about, it talked about where we are on going projects like this. Every, every citizens we talked to, every citizen we talked to will say, I do not want my taxes raised. Don't raise my taxes. Well, this is not raising your taxes. We vote, we voted on the twenty-three million dollar project. And with that, in conjunction with monies that we all pay to the county as well and others, not just our own money, but it pools of money. That's what a one point five is coming from the county. But let me just go ahead and read some background information on Duncanville and the projects with the county. Well, Duncanville was selected for a project along Main Street between Act Twenty and Camp Lutham during the fifth call for the project in twenty-eleven. This was the foundation for our original submission during the seventh call. Dallas County set aside one point two five million dollars to partner with the city on that project. However, the city never did the work due to funding constraints. In January twenty nineteen, the county sent the city a letter stating that there was five hundred thousand dollars remaining in the county fifth call funds. The city partnered with the county on these funds, these funds, a hundred and fifty thousand. And county funds was used to partnership on the main, on the main street corridor study that cost the city three hundred thousand dollars. The county put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars was used to help fund the, the regional by web study. Apparently no city match was required. The remaining funds, I want you to hear this, the remaining funds of one point eight million dollars was reallocated by the county towards other county projects priorities. We also partnered with the county on Willing Green, for those that remember, that recall that. Your commissioner talked about that project taking over 10 years. It took over 10 years because I think five of those years were us as our, as, as, as our elected officials were fighting whether we do it, whether we don't do it, so with the partnership with the county. So we're not looking good, we're not looking good at our partnership. We're zero for two. We're zero for two. And in my book, that means we're, we're, we're losing. And we're, it's not me that's losing, not you that's losing, it's our citizens that's losing. Can you take, can you try to do me a favor, Greg, and just put up, I want, I want to read, to look at people. All I'm looking at is the proposed resolution. Can you remove that where I can see what I'm looking at? Thank you. I want to show you, I want to show you, I want to talk about one other thing. The last time we talked about our, our bond, we talked about the Daniel Road and many citizens spoke up and said, "Build it, just replace it and build it the way we have it." Well, council, I want to thank you for listening to others who spoke very well and very loudly and said, "Let's make this a walkable bike lane type of atmosphere as well." So council, thank you for making that approval. Because we did vote for that, because we said we're going to make it walkable and bikeable, then all of a sudden, we were, the staff received a recommendation to, to apply for a $600,000 grant only because we utilized the road that we were going to just simply build the same or improve. But we called, but because we added walkable and bikeable and biking and cycling rather, we had the opportunity then to advance to the next level. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't receive it, but it was going to be another partnership. It's going to be a partnership with the county, the city, and two others, and two other cities. All right, let me try to wrap this up for close. And here's what I want, here's what I want, hopefully I want you to remove this because I want you to see this. For those who know what that is, that is our comprehensive plan. And many of you, even on the council, set during this time for discovering the plan, 2017. So if I had to go back now and look at the numbers, instead of saying 30 to 15, this is 300. People voted on this company to playing for us and I won't think it was over 300. I could be wrong, but it was more than 30. 2017. Well, best of case, I turn to Main Street District. It's a vision. Here's the strategy. And for those that don't have this book, you can find this on the website. This is strategy. I want to skip down and it says, "Improve circulation and connectivity." Is that what we're looking for? This is, this is citizen. This is not Mark. This is not the, the bond. This is what citizens say. That's page 71. I will, maybe I, maybe I didn't look at it right. Maybe I've missed something. Let me go to another one. Let me go to where it says downtown. Maybe I, maybe I missed something on downtown. This is future strategy. What did it say there? Transition smoothly to adjacent opportunity area. Make walkability, connectivity both to and through the district a top priority. Downtown. Downtown Duncanville, comprehensive plan 2017 that many of you set on the, on the, on the board to do. All right, I said, okay, truly I missed it again. Truly I missed it again. Well, I just, I just moved my tab. Well, you know what, I'll, I'll end with this, with this other one tab and I'll look at my other notes. So then I said, okay, well, I, I missed this comprehensive plan, but maybe I just missed it. It said, well, here are some challenges. It says, "What's our challenges?" Bring the downtown feel to the entire downtown and ensure uniformity, uniformity in entire downtown area. Design roadways that bring people and to people to downtown. For example, a loop. And then the details is in the, it's in the, it's in the, it's at the end. I looked at the details. And what did I find? But it says, "Roundabout." Roundabout? In this 2017 plan, I mean, we said roundabout? We said we wanted to see the roundabouts? It's all in the book. It's all in the book. So I asked the citizens, if you think we don't know where we're going as a council, I'll ask you again to look at the comprehensive plan to see if that is the direction we're going in. Because that's what I'm, until we, until we update that, that's exactly where I'll keep going. Then I'll enter partnerships. I'm just afraid that once we, once we lose this opportunity to have matched funds, that I'm in banking, we're in banking, and I tell you what, 50 cents on 50 cents, it's hard, it's hard to beat. Meaning 1.5 to 1.5 and it goes allocated to other cities. We saw that in 2011, it's repeating itself. It's hard to understand. If we're no better, if we can improve around about from whatever we saw someone else not doing properly and we can make ours better, we're stated are. People look at justice Duncanville.
Are you done, Mr. Cooks?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm not going to argue with, I'm not going to argue with the engineers, the engineers, traffic engineers. They're traffic engineers and they do their job and they do the job well. So I'm going to respect what they've said as well. And I'm going to respect what our citizens are saying, those 30 to 15, or those others that we all may have called and hear differently, to know that in order for us to move, in order for us to move forward, we're going to have to think a lot forward. We're going to have to use our own plan that was written in 2011 to make this work. I'm not going to stop every time. And I know that we're not going to stop. We're not going to stop as a council. But I just hope at some point that we were, we'll continue to move forward because everybody wants to see Duncanville better. I do, you do, and I want to encourage those 30, those 16 people that voted for or against to keep talking to us. I had to, I had to, I had to implement one new philosophy, philosophy for me. It says, "Your voice, your vote, and your participation." Council, I'm included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Moving on to Mr. Harvey at large.
Mr. Harvey, we can't hear you, sir. No, sir, we can't hear you. No. Maybe call in the number real quick and do it over your phone. No, we can't hear you.
Check to see if your mic is muted on your, on your device itself. Sometimes the muting on the Zoom can't be override ridden by the mic setting on your device itself. If you're on laptop, check and see if it's open.
I knew he was going to take this long. I would have kept talking.
No, we can't hear. If you call the phone number, you can put yourself on speaker that way.
Mayor, can we, can we continue to discuss anything with, with each other right now?
No.
No.
We're working around the table, Monty, and giving everybody an opportunity to express themselves. And I think we're, just need to continue on with that. Everybody's had the opportunity to speak.
And that's got to be it? There's no other opportunity to speak then? So you shut us down? I mean, no other opportunity?
I disagree.
When all of us have an opportunity to speak, I'm going to call for a motion. And be honest, Monty, I'm thinking that because you are in favor of this, I'm going to call upon you to make the motion to approve.
And I wanted to talk some more. I wanted to, I wanted to ask you specifically if, if, if certain changes were done like for the Santa Fe hookup or if we could continue design, would you guys reconsider this? Could we, could we tweak this design?
My primary objection is, is the dead ending of Santa Fe and recognition that we don't have a dangerous intersection today. You know, it's, it's, it's just not something that has to be done. And this is an amenity for our city right now, rather than a mandate. But the-
Agreed. It's an amenity.
The dead ending of Santa Fe is a major, is a major factor in my consideration, Monty.
It's, it's, it is agreed. It is an amenity. It's a great amenity. It's an amenity that attracts economic development, but I'm wondering if there is in a way that we couldn't get you guys to, to reconsider that are looking at this. If we, if we said, okay, well, we're going to, we're going to fix the, you know, since we're not all, we don't always get everything we all want. Is there a way we can say, okay, you connect Santa Fe up and we'll, let's, would you come in? I mean, would you vote for it then?
Well, the problem, just in our, in my discussion with, with Commissioner Price, there's no opportunity to allow any more time for us to do this.
No, I'm talking about we go ahead and vote it.
You know, you're talking about engineering redesign or something to see if it's going to be something better for us. But Commissioner Price has said, there's, the, the deadline for us to come back and, and look at this again is, is, is not going to be extended.
I, I think he needs to, I think, we need to ask him that. I don't think that's what he meant.
I did ask him that, Mark. I did ask him that and that's what he answered me in his phone call at nine o'clock in the morning on November 25th. His team has looked at the projects and this is, and the deadline will not be extended.
I'm not asking for the deadline to be extended.
For any redesign of the project, it's going to take those how many days or months to do that. And we will, the deadline for 15 December 7th call will have expired.
Mayor, our respect, Commissioner Price is there. Let him speak for himself.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager. What Councilman Anderson and Cook are talking about is not a total redesign. I mean, there's some augmentation going on, but it's not a total redesign. I mean, basic project. And if you, if Santa Fe is, is a particular year, that's not a major redesign.
Well, I'm not an engineer, but looking at the design of, of what's been shown to us, Santa, that, that Santa Fe dead end because of how the rerouting, but has to go from Nance back into Main Street, that, that's, that's major to me.
Well, I, you know, my, my director oh, it's not a major redesign.
So how, you know-
All I'm, all I'm asking, all I'm asking is, is there a way, is there a way we can move forward instead of vote something, vote this down? I'm asking the engineers that are here, Commissioner Price is here, we're here. This is an important, this is an important project, you know, it's a cornerstone, if you will, for our city at the, at Maine and Center. Can we, you know, can we vote it contingent upon a couple of things? And if it, if they can't get it done, then we don't do it.
Well, I don't know. Mr. Harvey, are you, do you have your mic working yet? Can we get your input?
I'm going to try calling you, Mr. Harvey, and putting you on speaker.
Hello?
Okay, can y'all hear Mr. Harvey now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I am against the project because we asked citizens to take time out of their busy schedule over a period of weeks to work through various propositions. And they did. And we brought it before the community and they overwhelmingly supported the project. So more than 29, over 49, or 34, over 49, however way you count it, it still didn't measure up to the supporting vote that the community gave us for all of those bond projects. So I don't know at what point someone realized that after fact, that the railroad was not going to work with us. Or we are obligated, in my opinion, to go back to the drawing board and take any new proposal through the same process the original proposal went through. And it's only fair to the citizens. And they respond positively when things are done in the right way. As far as I'm concerned, what we're doing now is a Hail Mary. And the last time I saw a Hail Mary was in Jeriwell when Duncanville played Delina Parknor Show. And I don't remember coming away with a good feeling from that. So I'm just simply saying, let's take the time to do it right, to build the consensus. We talk about incrementalism. This proposal is not incrementalism. It's revolutionary. It's radical. It needs time to be vetted. It needs time to build public support. We shouldn't be taking projects to Commissioner Price that's not overwhelmingly supported by the community. He shouldn't even be part of this conversation because we haven't done the work to bring a good project to the county. And it's unfair to them. It's unfair to the taxpayers. So I am voting against it and will make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
If you'll put the motion back up, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Uh, we have a, we have a chat. And it has a very, very simple answer. In terms of, would someone please explain if the language contained the bond was descriptive enough that it limited what could be done with the bond money? My understanding language intentionally flexible. The language is flexible, and that's has mandated to us by the state in terms of how bond descriptive money is used. In terms of conveying to our citizens, that's the different story. Our citizens understood that that money was going toward Main and Center. I'm sorry, uh, Main and Camp Wisdom.
If you'll put the motion, I'd like to make a motion. Whoever had the motion up, I'll read the motion edits. Put it back, if you'll place it back on the screen, please. I can make a motion to approve the Main Street corridor study recommendation for each segment of Main Street from I-20 to Nance Street. Select the project as seven, uh, segment, option six, alternative three, intersection at Main Street and Center Street. Main Street from Center Street to Nance Street and to Nance Street to Main Street to Santa Fe, Santa Fe Trail as the city nomination for the Dallas County Seventh Call for Project.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cooks. Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Motion has been seconded by Mr. Anderson.
City? I'm sorry, is there still, there still can't be, there can still be discussion after the motion, right? Because I would just like to discuss something.
Just ask the, ask the city attorney.
Yeah, I can allow it, and I'm going to. Go ahead, Monte.
I just, what I would like to, to, to discuss is the connection of Santa Fe. I wondered if, if Mark would, um, accept an amendment to that. If, if the motion includes a, a, a connection to Santa Fe that's not a major reworking of the engineering, some kind of connection from Santa Fe to Center Street.
But I still, I still don't know how the, how the county is going to give us any time for that, Monte. I, in Commissioner Price in, in Alberta, uh, this is out of our hands. We, we don't have answers to this, other than the fact that I was told that, that the deadline for this project, as designed in black and white, as we're looking at it, is either going forward or it's not. And, and so, you know, Monte's question, you know, my, my major objection to this is that, yeah, I don't like roundabouts, but, you know, the kicker here is, is how Santa Fe was treated, and it's wrong. It's just wrong.
And I'm gonna ask, and I'm gonna ask Mark for this, this amendment to the motion that, that I, that, that we amend the motion to connect Santa Fe, uh, to reconnect Santa Fe as part of the motion. It's not, it's not a, if it can be done, it's just the motion I'm making, or the, what I'm asking for friendly amendment is that we connect Santa Fe back up to Center as part of, part of the project.
Monte, Commissioner Price, somebody's gotta give us an answer, you know?
No, I, I'm not asking them to give us an answer. I'm, I'm making them, I'm asking that we connect, we, we make the decision to connect it up.
Can we move that proposal resolution off the screen? I like to see people faces.
I didn't understand a word you just said.
What you removed, they did it. They understood.
I'm sorry, I'm still not understanding what you.
No, they understood, Mayor. I was just trying to get them to remove the motion from the screen where I could see the gallery. It's done. And, and answer to your, and answer to Monday's question, I don't mind Monday making an amendment to that. I still feel around the, around the table that, uh, they're not going to accept it regardless. But before I accept that friendly amendment, I'm, I'm gonna refer back to Commissioner Price because I think he already answered the question, and maybe I missed it. He answered the question, and he said, engineers can make it still work if we approve the, the project. Commissioner, am I missing it?
Well, no, uh, Councilman, uh, you know, one of the things I said is, you know, my engineers will, I mean, we'll look at it and, and see if we can make it work. I mean, we're sitting here right now, looking at the plans. And, uh, it's, it's going, it's going to be difficult to talk about that kind of flow in and around that roundabout dealing with Santa Fe. It's, it's going to be difficult. Um, and, and at the end of the day, all of these projects, they've got to be, they've got to be safe. I mean, we can talk about economic viability, but they, they've got to be safe. And you were there on the seventeenth and heard that presentation. I don't know if we can get Santa Fe there as we, as we're spread out here looking at this project. I mean, we're willing, we're willing to look at it, but between now and fifteen, we'll be able to tell you, one way or the other. So, you know, if you, if you guys vote with that as a caveat, between now and the seventeen, uh, when I go to, go to court, my engineers will, will be able to tell you. And we can't do it, can't do it. And like you say, you just, that's one five, you don't have to worry about.
And we asked Mr. Ramey, didn't, didn't they say, didn't our engineers say that we could do it, but it would be a right turn only off of Santa Fe? And that's one of the chats, um, where there's a chat about that too right now, that, that we could do it, but it'd be a right turn only?
Molly, Molly Lox from, um, Burgess and Niupel, she was the one that came up with the concept. I'll, I'll let her talk a little bit, but we did look at a, like more of an oval roundabout incorporating Santa Fe. But at the time, it looked to be more complex, and that's why we went to, you know, we, the final recommendation was, was a roundabout. Uh, Molly, um, is there anything you wanna add or share, um, at this time regarding that?
Yeah, I just messaged our traffic analysis engineer, and she said she doesn't know a hundred percent for sure, but we can make it work. The volumes are low enough right now that we should be able to accommodate one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty vehicles at peak hour. Uh, but it would need to be right in, right out, just because making a left turn there isn't really ideal. And, um, and we've got the median, but you can easily make a left turn, you turn right, flip a U-turn around in the roundabout, and then make your left, that would make your left turn. So everyone would still have access through Santa Fe. It would be right in, right out, and then they would utilize the roundabout to make a U-turn movement to turn left.
Would that, would that say, Monte, yes, I'll, I'll accept it, even though I can see the writing on the wall, uh, that I don't see anyone else who's gonna be moving on this, but I'll accept that amendment if you'd like to, uh, since you proposed it.
I'm hoping.
I've got a question before we, before we do that, because listening to, to Ms. Lox is an engineer. I can't visualize the, the oval roundabout, Greg, uh, without seeing some kind of plan for it and the complexity of it that it would entail. Uh, that's why, I mean, here, here's a very interesting thought, just occurred to me, that there was a way to actually work Santa Fe into this roundabout because it was necessary to do so for the traffic flow and the convenience and the opportunity for our people of our city. However, too complex that let's just shut Santa Fe down. That way we don't have to worry about the complexity. So now I'm thinking, okay, there was a way that I never saw in terms of having a roundabout that did accommodate Santa Fe without being shut down and turning it into a dead end, but behind the, the tire shop. And if that's the case, do we have an opportunity to, you know, I hate to do this, but I'm, hey, you know, I'm an honest guy, and, and we got some honest people sitting around the table here. If there's an opportunity to bring Santa Fe into play, instead of shutting it down and, and turning it into a parking lot behind the, the twenty-four hour tire shop, can we, can we table this thing until the next meeting and see something so fast to give us an idea that this can be done and, 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 uh, and Commissioner Price and Alberta go along with it with their engineers?
Mayor, could I offer something? I'm listening to you close, but can I offer something? Can we see if we would have the votes to do that here tonight? Because if we don't, then there's no reason to even, would, I mean, if, you know, if we have the votes to do it, if it's, if it's possible, we do it. If it's not, we don't. It's dead. If it's, if it's, if it's not. So if it's, if it can't be done, it can't be done safe, as Commissioner Price said, then, then we, it's just dead. It dies. But couldn't we vote it?
Mayor, Mayor, you've got a, you've got a motion and a second, and amended.
But we're still having discussion, right, Bob? Can we still discuss?
You ask whether they can pull the council, that's a vote, so.
That's what I mean is.
Only thing that takes precedent is a motion to table
Okay.
or a call for the vote, or an amendment to the current.
Here I did the amendment, but here I did the amendment.
I know, but it could be amended more than once.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Price, I'm still not, I use the word categorically and really sure that if we take another look at what can be done with, with this roundabout, an inclusion of Santa Fe, that the county, you, you are still gonna have that one point five thousand dollar match available to us after the fifteenth. If we, if, if the engineers and so forth can't bring it to us so that we as a council can take a look at it and have another shot at this thing, is the, is the fifteenth workable to, to give us a few more days or not? In the past, you said no. So I really need to understand how you.
Well, first of all, Mayor, I think, you know, you guys have the ability, you know, to call, I don't know what Ms. Lux, I don't know how much time it'll take between she and, and, um, Ms. Blair and, and, and our engineers to, to get together, Mr. Ramey, and how much time does that take? How, what does it take for you guys to have another, uh, even a call meeting to deal with it? I mean, is it that important to you? I mean, this, you, you have some ability here as well. So all I need, all I need to do is the engineers to look at it, because as I said, every other hundred and forty projects will hit on the fifteenth. This would be the one outlier. You know, I, I'm trying to buffer some council people and all. I, I'm trying to make amends with Duncanville, you know, for, 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 for something in these forty-one projects that I have. And so, I mean, and, and I, I, I hear Councilman Anderson, I hear Councilman Cook, but if, as you said, if the engineers can't safely do it, then we're not gonna do it anyway. So I don't know how long it's gonna take them. I mean, I mean, Alberta, I'll let you speak to it, or Teddy, or Ms. Lux, to, 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 to review that consideration. What are we talking about time-wise? Ms. Lux?
It wouldn't take us very long, and we have a, wow, preliminary layout that we can work from. Um, my only concern, going back to it, is, uh, if we need to do any work within railroad right-of-way. I think that may have been part of what informed our decision before of it's, um, not the most easy roundabout, maybe to navigate if it's your first roundabout, but more the concern of if it gets into railroad right-of-way was the bigger concern.
Okay. Oh, it's, it's got more, it's got more facets to it than just safety, for one. You know, complexity is a very broad term. I don't know how complex it is, but now Molly is saying the complexity involves BNSF, and if BNSF is involved, great day, folks, you know, we, they're gonna play around with us. Uh, but Molly, are you saying that the complexity of the oval roundabout and involving BNSF is, is like a ninety percent impossibility?
Well, we've, we've worked with, we've been able to work with railroad companies before. I just, I think that the oval-shaped roundabout is more costly and really it is, it, it's the exact same, it's gonna get us the exact, to the exact same place as if we turned Santa Fe into a right-in, right-out uh, facility, basically. I mean, you might be able to make a left into Santa Fe with the roundabout, but you can also go down Main Street still and, and access Santa Fe anywhere else also. Doesn't, there's not a lot of people turning to go south down Santa, or down Santa Fe based on our traffic volumes. So in an effort to make the intersection tighter with less impacts to surrounding right-of-way, I would recommend that we create Santa Fe as a right-in, right-out facility and still just utilize the single-lane roundabout that we have shown in that exhibit. I think it's more cost-effective. Last one for the community, and, and it saves costs, and, uh, and it reduces impacts to the park as well. And we can completely stay out of the railroad right-of-way for sure.
That's, that's the way we should go about, that's the way we should do it. That's what you. Molly, you can't put the, the other one doesn't sound like it, it worked. I mean, I don't see, you know, I think that's the way we should go. That's the route, if that works.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Alberta Blair again. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, speak a little louder, Alberta, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, what I was gonna suggest here is that, uh, between, uh, your, uh, Mr. Ramey, Ramey and myself and our engineer, Ted, Ted, and Johnny, that we would get together with the consultant and look at this one more time. Uh, I agree about the right in, right out. That was something that was on the table a, a while back ago when we started looking at this. But as Commissioner has indicated, our key thing here is about safety. And, and that's what we're really looking at, and that's what we're honing into. So we could go back and look at that. But those, they're, we, we wanna look at all the considerations when it comes to that. So again, that would be something that we can probably get done in the next, you know, a couple of days, or, and going into next week. But again, you know, uh, I guess the position here is how soon can we get, you know, something from, uh, the city on this whole direction?
My primary, as Monte has correctly ascertained, and as I attempted to articulate as clearly as possible, I don't like roundabouts, but my primary objection to this one is the manner in which it treated Santa Fe. And the fact that there was an impact to our memorial. Now, Molly just said that there is a way to, to connect Santa Fe, and there's a way to, uh, completely untouch our memorial. And if there's a way to do that, I'd be willing to consider it. Now, I don't know about the rest of the council members. You know, we, we've got a motion on the table. And as Bob, our city attorney, has said, uh, there was a modification to it. Now, that modification doesn't really sound like what Molly just described either, so I'm not real sure. But, and I hate to table this thing because that just drags it out into another time. Bob, I'm, I'm lost.
Well, I, I. You've got a motion, you've got a motion on the table. The real question is, would you accept the right-hand turn right on only and keep the Santa Fe connection? That's the motion. I think it's appropriate for you to go back to the people that were against the project without the Santa Fe connection. Go back and ask them, would it make a difference in their consideration of this? And if, depending on what their answers are, you've got a motion, then you're gonna take a vote, unless somebody wants to, to move to table. But, you know, I, it seems appropriate, since debate's still open, that you could ask uh, those that spoke against the project, if they would reconsider it, if the Santa Fe connection with the right turn only is on the table. And if they said it wouldn't make any difference to them, then take a vote and move on.
Then can't we just ask Don or Joe if they would be interested in, could that change their mind?
Well, you don't run the meeting, the mayor does, but somebody could ask them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I don't.
Yes. Yes, to answer your question, Molly, yes, someone could ask them. It's not, that, that's the mayor's job, not mine.
That question, Monte, has been rolling around in the back of my brain for about the past 10 minutes. Uh, and I wasn't clear in my mind about the propriety of doing so. We have gone around the table, but we're still open to discussion because that's the way we are as a council. We do talk a lot. So I guess I'll, I'll go back around, you know, if, Joe, um, you know, in, in your discussion about your objection to it. I didn't hear anything about Santa Fe. Would, would anything about Santa Fe change how you feel about it?
No, sir, not really. I mean, I've got, I've got a lot of different categories. One was, you know, that there was no time to really consider it for the community. Uh, Santa Fe was one. Did anybody talk to the business owners there? Were they, uh, well, the constituents I talked to, this, this was their concerns. And then some of the things they wrote as well were the same exact things they expressed. There was a lot of things all over the place. So it's still, that's, that's just one part of it, the Santa Fe, but I, but I heard.
Your connection just dropped. We're not hearing you, your title.
The number.
Okay, I think you need to start over. Yeah, yeah.
The engineer, let's see, is it Molly? The one that, that did the roundabout.
Yeah, Molly was a traffic engineer that, uh, came up with the roundabout.
One thing I did hear her say was that with the number of cars that we have now, it would be doable. Well, it would be more cars then and when, up on, when she steps out of faith, that is. So that'd be my question to her, or I guess that would be part of the study.
If you don't mind me answering that, um, we, basically we sized this roundabout and assumed the traffic volumes based off of the 20-year projection for base. So we took the current traffic volumes and projected them 20 years. And it's only really about a 2% growth volume is what, um, is used for traffic volume projections in the Duncanville area. And with those projections, we're easily still able to accommodate the volumes on Santa Fe. You know, barring any drastic redevelopment or complete changes, but it's hard to know the unknown at this point. And that's kind of the difficult part with traffic forecasting.
Sure. Okay, thank you. But that was really it. I mean, there is, uh, quite a few, like Mr. Kaiser brought up, you know, he's got a lot of questions.
Yeah, but he said, he said he was in.
My last point is that we're voting for, uh, option six. There was no variance in there whatsoever. It said option six, so. That's, that's why I'm voting that way. It didn't say option one, two, three, four, five, four, or six.
Options, the resolution, option six, alternative three.
We're voting on that one simply because it's the only one that has the financial scoring that it's acceptable to the county in terms of matching funds. That's the only option available, reason why.
Right, and that's what I understand and, and that's what a lot of folks did not like, was that it was only option six. So.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to, to Don, uh, would, would, but I'm not even gonna put words in your mouth. You got any, any comments, any additional thoughts?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, Monte and Mark, what I'm gonna tell you is that I feel like. That we are trying to look forward and this isn't specifically backwards. I think we really need to pull back and, and come with a plan that, that'll, that'll be workable. There are some very good concepts on this, uh, that, that this, that would make it walkable, would make it. A, a better downtown area. But I still, I, I still feel that we've got 1.5, let's, let's put it back in the citizens' hands. Let's, let's let them give us some alternates or options to figure out what to do with this and, and make those improvements. But I, I'll also say, yes, we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out exactly what we want to do as a council.
May I like to call for the vote with that, with that's the case?
Well, I appreciate that, Mark, uh, but I did want to let Mr. Harvey have a, another word if he wanted one. In fairness to him.
No problem.
We have you.
Against, against the project area. That's all.
Okay, all right. All right, so, uh, we have a, it's been called for a vote. And the motion needs to be repeated. Yes, I'm not sure how it stands at this particular moment. Mark, do you recall exactly what you said? Or Bob, do you have it down?
Yeah, let, let me see if I can do it. Right now, the motion is, as amended, would be to approve alternate. Uh, option six, alternate three for the, uh, seventh call of projects as the submitted Duncanville project. With, uh, non-closure of the Santa Fe, uh, street, Santa Fe Road.
Okay, that's, that's the motion. So City Secretary, we have a call for the vote. Please make a roll call vote.
Councilmember Veracruz, for or against?
Let me, uh, ask one question there. Uh, all that, that this is the amendment?
No, this is the, the, the amendment was accepted by the movement. So you're not voting on the amendment, you're voting on the amended motion to approve alternate six. Or option six, alternate three with a Santa Fe connection.
Okay, so I do not want it to be against, is that correct?
Yes, it, it doesn't change, it, it just changes, the Santa Fe connection's the only difference.
Okay, against.
Mayor Proton Mac Burnett, for or against?
I didn't hear Mr. Mac Burnett.
Against.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against? Councilmember Cooks, for or against? Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
Against.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
Against. So the motion has, has failed.
Mayor, that leaves you with, uh, the taking any necessary action as a result of executive session, which is still, uh, subject to being reopened. And then you've got your two staff reports.
We, yeah, we need to go ahead and, uh, take the two staff reports and then reconvene into executive session. So we would, we're on, uh. We're on item number six, uh, received the annual investment report as of September 30th, 2020. Uh, that's by Mr. Summerlin, presuming that all council members have reviewed that. Any questions of, of Mr. Summerlin? Uh, the only comment I would have on that is, uh, if you take a look at how much money we're earning, we're almost paying the banks to keep our money in the banks. Things are looking pretty bad right now. Uh, received the public works quarterly report. Now, in, in my package, there was no link to that. So there was nothing for me to review prior.
I sent that email out, Mayor. It had the PowerPoint.
Oh, it's a separate email? I was looking in the agenda for it. All right, well, I will, uh, I'll pass on that and then trust. Any questions on the public works quarterly report then? Seeing none, we'll close item six. All right, with that, uh, we will recess our open city council meeting. Make a note. Timestamp is 10:05. And we will go to executive session, continue our executive session. So please leave this link and go to your executive session link.